Okay.
That's accurate, yeah.
I'll be polite.
And he said, oh, he was going to do a time and then he got a phone call. First of all, phone call that means it's a daycare and maybe late again. So we'll be there.
We're live, just stay up.
We are.
Thumbs up for me.
Oh, okay. I'll open the City of Ellsworth Plan Board Meeting for October 1st, 2025. Staff introductions, please, or any board introductions?
Lisa LaRue, board member.
John DeLeo, board chair.
Rick Lyles, vice chair.
Mike Hing, board member.
Michael Bayne, board member.
Staff introductions.
Danielle Gift, Director of Urban Planning and Development.
Brittany Merrill, City Planner.
Robert Grant, Code Enforcement Officer.
This is Utterlow Deputy Code Enforcement Officer.
Sarah Devlin, Deputy City Manager.
Item number two, preliminary plan review of a major used site development entitled Hancock Judicial Center for Applicant State of Maine Judicial Branch and Owner State of Maine. The proposal is construct a 28,500-plus-square-foot courthouse building to serve as the new Hancock County Courthouse. The subject property is approximately 17.9-acre lot located at Merrill Lane Extension off Route 1, High Street. Tax map 2025.
Chairman, my name is Bill Garrish. I'm with Sebago Technics and I am here representing the State of Maine Judicial Branch for the proposed Hancock Judicial Center. And if it's appropriate, I'll give you a brief presentation on the project.
Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. So initially, the, just, I guess, in a summary, here's an overall site plan of the project area. The State of Maine did acquire a 17.9-acre parcel of land. It's to the east of High Street off Merrill Lane. So there is currently no roadway or access to the site. There is a, an agreement with the City of Ellsworth and the State of Maine to develop that access. So the project site would be easterly of the Merrill Furniture Facility. So the 17.9-acre parcel starts at Card Brook along here and extends up to the proposed Merrill Lane Extension right-of-way. It extends on the west side from a wetland area over just behind the facilities off High Street and then continues into the undeveloped parcel to the east. So just a little bit on the resources, this is Card Brook down here. It is a designated as an urban impaired stream. This line here represents the 100-year flood zone. The threat of the brook is actually down in this area. This hatched area is the 250-foot setback from the, from the brook. It's also identified as an inland waiting bird habitat. And then these areas that you see extending up into the site, there's a few little upland pockets down here, but there is a significant amount of wetlands surrounding the, the site. I will look at the, go quickly to the existing conditions plan. Sorry about that. So you can see by the contours, there are some higher elevations up in this part of the site, which is off the proposed road extension. So the development itself is proposed to go in this area. Some of the parking will extend down here adjacent to the wetlands. And there's more parking out back adjacent to the wetlands. Due to some of the grading, we just did touch a couple of the peaks of these wetland areas. This is kind of a wet meadow. This is more of a forested wetland on this side. There's a total of 1,500 square feet, plus or minus, of, of wetland impacts proposed. And I'll just jump back, I guess, to the proposed development. So the building itself has a footprint of about 28,500 square feet. There are three floors. There is a ground level in the rear. That is at around elevation 143 and change. That is, you know, basically, there, the, the areas, there's five garage bays in the back where the judges come in and park. There's a Sally Port to, to bring in the, the prisoners and so forth. Employee parking around the rear. There is a ground floor that's at about 12 feet higher in elevation that comes in through the front. And then there's a second floor above. So in total, there's around 64,000 square feet of floor area in the building. And then, as with courthouses like this, the areas are very specifically divided up between the areas for the prisoners, the areas for the judges, the areas for the public, and with no opportunity to those areas to, to connect inside the building. So the area out and back is, is a secure area with a fence and a gate over here. And then this access road would be for the employees and so forth. The public areas would be out in here. This would be all public parking. The accessible parking is right up here. There are some EV parking spaces here for the public. There's also some in back here for the staff. And then the accessible parking spaces for the staff are back in this area. There's also a few motorcycle parking spaces in here. There's anticipated about 25 full-time employees inside the, the facility. There's 30 parking spaces in the rear. And with the motorcycle spaces, there's a total of 126 in the public area. And in total, the site will create about 2.37 acres of new impervious area and about 2.1 acres of landscaped areas, which you see in green around here. And the, as I mentioned earlier, the TOA slope will extend slightly into the wetlands in a couple areas here, here, and then just a little bit over in here. Stormwater runoff is collected and treated by a series of three underdrained soil filters. There's one over in this area of the site. There is another one down in the corner. This parking lot does all slope downward in this direction. So there's an inset here that shows the corner of the parking lot, which would drain into this one. And then there's another underdrained soil filter in the rear to collect runoff from the roof and part of the parking this way. There are curbs, granite curbing, proposed around all the paved areas with a system of catch basins and storm drains to collect the runoff to be treated by these facilities. The project, where it is over 20,000 square feet of new impervious in an urban impaired stream, it does trigger a stormwater management permit with the DEP. It does not trigger a site location permit. However, it does have to meet the full stormwater standards, along with the standards that the City of Ellsworth has. So in addition to providing 100% treatment for the paved areas and treatment for over 80% of the total developed areas, these underdrained soil filters also provide stormwater detention. They were designed for the 2, 10, and 25-year storm. We also did, in, in, in the application, we did do the runoff numbers for two other events. We usually check with the emergency spillways and the basins to make sure that they can, if the outlets control structures happen to get completely plugged up and, and weren't functioning, that the 25-year storm can pass through the spillway with still one foot of freeboard in the pond. And those calculations are in there showing to the positive of that. And then we also ran the 100-year storm through the, the model just to show that the ponds do convey the 100-year storm as well with more than one foot of freeboard in each of the storm events, in each of the three ponds. And then you can see landscaping around the site. There is proposed to be a, about a three, three-to-four-foot-high granite stone wall in the front just to kind of transition from the lower elevations here. The back part of the building is about a foot or so above existing grade. That puts this area up here more like 10 feet above existing grade just to get the entrance in there above the ground floor. So there is some landscaping. There's flagpoles, benches, trash receptacles and so forth in the entry area. I'll just zoom in there a little bit. And we're proposing lighted bollards, kind of wayfinding-type lighting coming up in through there. Some bike racks in this area. You can see the accessible parking, the EV parking down here, and motorcycle parking. And based on some staff comments, we are providing sidewalks throughout the parking areas that do extend out to the proposed roadway. Right now, we're showing a conceptual crosswalk. The road design, plan and profiles and so forth are anticipated in, I believe, the end of the month. So once we get the road design done, which is being done by the city's engineer, then we'll, I guess, kind of firm up this area as, as far as the design goes. But preliminary plans show a sidewalk on the opposite side of the Merrill Lane Extension. Traffic will all access the site through the signalized intersection out at Merrill Lane and High Street, right in here. And that will be the, the, the single access point for the site. I believe there is an easement in place or in the works as a secondary access around the back of the site through the LL Bean site. But basically, the access point is through here. Based on the projections, the, the project is requiring a traffic movement permit with the main DOT, which has already been submitted to the main DOT a few weeks ago. And similar to the existing courthouse, the regular daily traffic levels are relatively low during normal business, but they do have their jury selection days where the traffic spikes significantly. And I believe John Adams and Jacob Saroyes from Barton and La Judas are on the, somewhere here that can potentially answer some of your questions if you have some with regards to traffic and the process with the traffic movement permit and so forth. And then just utilities, the Merrill Lane Extension is proposed to provide a 10-inch sewer main along with an 8-inch water main and three-phase power. The judicial center, actually, I'll jump back to the utility plan. So I'll start with the sanitary sewer. The, the sewer comes out of the lower part of the building in the back, in the fenced-in area. There's a proposed pump station with a valve vault just beyond the pump station. The control panel for the pump station would be right on the back part of the building, again, in the fenced-in area. And then there's a 3-inch force main proposed up in, uphill to a sewer manhole and then gravity sewer down into the future sewer main in Merrill Lane Extension. Similarly, with the water, there would be a water service that comes in through the access road through the southerly part of the site, 6-inch main, which ties off to a 3-inch domestic service and a 6-inch fire service. There's a fire department connection proposed right here, a fire hydrant right across the access road over in here. And electric and telecom is, is proposed to come in underground from Merrill Lane in, along the employee access to a pad mounted transformer and then entry, enter the building on this side. And then there is, out in this area, the dumpster enclosure. There's a generator proposed, propane tanks, and there is an equipment pad proposed back in, in this area. So this would be an automated gate that would have a pedestal over on this side that would provide access to the back part of the building. And then we've had some discussions on snow storage areas. We've identified three snow storage areas. We've kind of left out, you can see the site lighting. I should point out, the site lighting will have a lot of telecom cables running around as well. A lot of the light poles will have cameras on them. And the site lighting plan, a photometrics plan was provided in the application package. We did leave the light, we left this area here fairly open, as well as the back area down here and an area in here that would be suitable for snow storage areas. We are in discussions with the DEP as well as the owners. The owners would, the, the state will basically contract the snow removal out once the, the facility is done. But we are looking at providing snow storage more scattered throughout the site, kind of getting some up in this area and then maybe in the back just to keep the snow storage areas a little further away from the wetland areas. The wetlands do feed Card Brook. And so we're working on some changes based on some staff comments there. And I believe that's a brief summary, or somewhat brief summary, I guess. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I got a couple small questions for you.
Okay. The fire inspector is not here. Dealing with hydrants, the, the road from High Street to the entrance to the facility is approximately 1,100 feet. Is there any proposals for hydrants within that 1,100 feet?
I have not seen the, the, the design, or at least the final design for the road. I do believe the answer is yes, but I can't say for sure.
Okay. The, the other question I had was, I know that there is one on the backside by where the sprinkler connection is, et cetera. Has there been a proposal or any discussion, and you can answer this, Tom, as to whether there should be one just as you come in to go to the north at the Y? If you have, if they, the fire department has trucks going into that direction, they have no way of water supply on the other side of that building? Has there been discussion concerning that?
No, we haven't had any discussions specifically on that. We, I guess, considered the location as being, you know, the best location with regards to the proposed service main and, and so forth. I don't believe the owner would be opposed to adding another fire hydrant at that location if that, if that's what Tom recommends.
I think so.
Where you come in, where you...
Right in this area, you mean?
And then where it lies.
So I, so I do apologize mainly. So I believe on the main road itself, there's six hydrants on that main road and I think one of them is at that, at the corner right there.
Six hydrants on the 1,100 feet?
Somewhere.
From High Street to the facility?
Yeah.
Six, you're gonna put six in there?
Six, five. There's like, I believe there's five from what I, from what I saw on the paper.
Okay.
But I believe there's one, there is a hydrant there on the corner that, that'll be on the main road.
Okay.
I'd have to, I'd have to get with you.
There's nothing on the plan that I saw any hydrants.
Right. It's not on these plans, it's on the road plans that you, that you don't have.
Okay.
Because they're two separate projects.
Okay.
So I will get with you on that, Mike, as soon, I'll get the, the plans and I will look at them tomorrow.
Can you have that by the final?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. All right. The only other thing I had, and I think you cleared it up, was the, the difference in the numbers as far as square feet. I was a little confused at first because it said, it said 28,500 at the beginning and then the last page of Section 2, it said 64,000. I understand that now to be the aggregate square feet of the building.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
The, the, the ground floor level would only go as far as this dashed line here. This would be an elevator over in this area that would bring them up, but the se, the, the ground floor and the second floor would encompass the whole footprint.
Okay. The other question, Tom, I have for you is looking at the turning radiuses for your fire trucks. A couple of them I have a concern. I think plate three of five shows the turning capability out back behind. Once you go through the automated gate, you'll be backing into parking spaces.
I don't have the, the...
That's plate three of five, so...
Yep.
So from the end, where the, going in behind to coming out through the gate to the, where the dumpsters are, is less, is less than 150 feet? So the plan was, was to back out to...
Right, you, you, they are proposing a backing into where the dumpsters are.
Yes.
I understand that, but when you go past that, around the backside?
Correct. We'll be, we'll be backing out to the gate, up to the T.
Okay, that's, that's fine. I'm just, I was just concerned that you were showing backing in two parking spaces back there.
Yeah, no, no backing into parking spaces.
No, I wouldn't think so. And I think there was one other that I was looking at. Maybe it was the first one. Hang on a second. That one I think is fine. That one was fine. Maybe it was this one. Okay. No, I guess that was the only one. How did I look at it? Okay, all right. That's all I got, John.
Okay, I got some traffic questions. First of all, this is just a matter of, of interest. You know, there, and, and at one point here, at the very beginning of the thing, you talk about a meeting between Barton and someone.
Yeah.
Met with MDOT Regional Planning person. Is, are there people from the city there at those kinds of meetings? I mean, this is a fairly significant project with...
It is. There, there is a pre-application meeting forthcoming. That's the first step. The traffic movement permit has been submitted and the city will definitely be invited to that meeting, so, and they'll be part of that process. And I don't know if John and, and Jacob are somewhere here that they can...
We're, yeah, we're here on the Zoom room.
Okay. So I'll let you guys handle the hard questions.
But I would just add to what you said, Bill. The process that main DOT uses for the traffic move permit is very much inclusive of the, of the community the project's in. And so the, the document that has been submitted to main DOT has also been submitted to the city and city staff and, and, and members and people from the public or whoever wants to attend the pre-application meeting that Bill is mentioning, that, that's allowed also. So it's a very open process and the city will be very involved in it.
Okay. You know, you talked, or someone talked about the, you know, peak hour of the, you know, traffic coming in and out of the, of the, of the facility. And you talked about, you know, jury selection day, right? Now that, does that occur weekly or monthly or jury selection day?
I think it's, it's multiple days monthly. I don't think it's...
It wouldn't be weekly.
Yeah, I don't think it's weekly, but it's not just one day a month.
So my question, my question is, when you do things like, and I assume that you're doing like a level service calculation for the various intersections and so forth?
Yeah.
Which aren't here yet.
Yeah, correct.
None of that stuff.
Yeah, that will be for...
But when you, when you look at the peak hour, you know, you do have a table in here that has peak hour, AMPR, PMPR, peak hour and so forth. Does that take into account jury selection day as the peak? Or is the ITE stuff just kind of a generic, you know, peak hour? Do you understand what I'm asking?
I do. And, and I, I can answer in general terms and then John can correct me, but I do know that early on in the process, the state did provide, you know, basically information on, you know, what they had for, for, you know, traffic and, and people coming in and out of the building, which they monitor not only in Ellsworth but at other courthouse facilities that are similar to what this is. And the ITE manual seems to be a little more conservative than that based on their real numbers. Their real numbers seem to be lower. So I think, I think to answer your question, those numbers would probably be representative of a jury, jury selection day and then some.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. No, and I like the idea that you, that you look to other pla, and other courthouses. I mean, I, that's, when you, when you have that kind of opportunity, you should always take advantage of it.
Absolutely, yeah.
Rather than depending on the, on the models per se.
Yeah.
You did a bunch of stuff with crash analysis. To what end? I mean, I, I got it, it was interesting, I read it, you know? And so what are you gonna do with that information? How does that inform, you know, some aspect of the design of the project? I mean, there doesn't seem to be anything done with that.
I, I, just to make sure we get the right answer, I'm gonna turn that one over.
That's fine, too. Or, or give me multiple answers, you know? The right one must be in there somewhere, right?
No, that's an excellent question. And so just step back for a second. The document that's been submitted is, is not a full traffic study. It's really sort of a presentation of the project, of the trip generation. We, we, we've simply looked at crash data in the area of the project along High Street and other intersections nearby. And it's more of a stating the facts of what we found. So what's gonna happen at the scoping meeting, this pre-application meeting that Bill was talking about, is we're gonna go through, one of the major topics we'll talk about is, is safety and crash data. And generally, what happens at the scoping meeting, we're gonna be asked to look at all of those locations that we've identified that actually main DOT has already identified that shouldn't be looked at. So that'll be a charge of ours coming out of the scoping meeting to, to do an analysis of those high crash locations. And if there's some, if there are some things that can be done to mitigate crash patterns or the number of crashes, then we'll be proposing that during the traffic movement permit process. The, the, the meeting Bill's talking about is sort of step one of the process. After that meeting, we're gonna do a full traffic study and then we submit that to both the city and DOT. And a major component of that will be looking at the crash data. So there'll be more to it than what you're seeing right now. Right now, it's just presenting, here's the data.
Some other data, yeah. Okay. I would just make the point that normally we would have a draft of that analysis at this point as opposed to getting it when the final is presented to us as a fait accompli, right?
Yeah.
So I don't know, there's obviously no way around that at this point.
Yeah.
So be prepared.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
And, and one, the, the, one other point that I would make in terms of the, of the, you know, the inter, the signalized intersection, as you come, come away from that intersection onto the site, you know, there is that driveway that goes over to LL Bean, right? And so I hope that you're gonna be looking at that intersection as well. Now, that may be okay because of the differing, you know, when the peak hour for the site is, when the peak hour for LL Bean is, that sort of stuff.
Okay.
But that's basically an unsignalized intersection.
Yeah.
And, you know, and, and possibly a congestion point, whatever, so...
Okay, duly noted, yeah.
And given that there's a real honest-to-God traffic analysis to look at, I'm done.
Okay.
Well, let me, before we go on, somebody else, though. I have some questions on the traffic.
Okay.
While we're at it. In Section 8, the traffic analysis, on page 3, it lists some pedestrian improvement recommendations. Now, is that something that, this is from your consultant. Is this something, these recommendations include High Street at Merrill, High Street at Walgreens, High Street at Main and Oak. Are these suggestions something that the state...
Are these suggestions something that the state is looking to do, will do?
I think that all came from the initial onsite meeting with, with the DOT, is that correct, John?
Yes, these are preliminary recommendations based on the meeting we had with the Maine DOT's region traffic engineer, who came out of the Bangor office, John Terrio. But again, this, this, this isn't set in stone either way, these are just some initial, some initial points we've made.
So those things will be fine tuned during this analysis phase?
Yeah.
This next phase?
Yes.
Okay, and then in, in section one D, proposed uses in the general vicinity of the proposed, proposed development. You list WL properties, the thirty-six unit residential housing on Beale's Avenue, homes to suites. Would they have to include, not that it's a big generator, but the Union Farm Equipment that just got approved?
Not necessarily, just because of location, but we can have them included.
I mean, I don't know how far.
They're pretty far down.
They're like half, a couple street lights.
And, and, and they're relatively low generators too, so.
Yeah.
In section three, site distance, you have a chart that lists the Maine DOT site distance. There's a thirty-five mile an hour zone, three hundred five feet. We should point out that the city has their own site distance standards, for that zone to be three hundred fifty feet, I don't suspect that there's a problem at that location, but it should reflect that.
That is valid. We, we think that's, that's also net, but we certainly will check that and ensure that during the process.
I mean, this is kind of a unique project because we're looking at a project where there's no road currently.
Yeah.
For the most part. And we, and Rick briefly touched on the entrance that goes into LL Bean. And the further analysis on the traffic, especially the real busy days, I'd like to see, you know, what the queue would be, whether, you know, the traffic going into the courthouse, especially, you know, late in the afternoon, if the court's getting out or on busy court days, you know, if that's gonna affect Key Bank, the entrance to LL Bean, how it affects Marrow Furniture, because you have some business there right within feet of the traffic light.
Yeah.
And if you, if that, you know, you've got a lot of people coming out of Marrow Lane at the, at a red light and cars coming in, especially trying to get to Key Bank, and can't get into their parking lot, that may create a backup into High Street.
Yeah, yeah, no, that will certainly.
That particular intersection's already pretty complex.
Yeah, yeah, no, that'll be part of the traffic analysis for sure.
But the queue, the queuing, if they do it like a synchroanalysis, whatever, you know, all the queuing and stuff comes out of that, or, you know, it's, it's an output.
Yeah.
I just wanna, I've got some other questions, but other people.
I have a, in the traffic area, I just want a little follow-up, I understand that in the proposal thing, I was reading about how there's several things that are being proposed as, you know, problem areas that need to be looked at. My concern would be since the city is gonna be responsible to build the Marrow Lane extension, and maybe if some proposals from the DOT come down and say you need to correct this, this and this in order to make this project work out, is the state going to participate in the costs of the corrective measures when this, you know, as this moves forward? And that's, when we, when you get the details, I'm sure in the meeting that's gonna be discussed.
It will, yeah.
Yeah, that's probably, cause that, you know, that'd be a curious thing.
Yeah, yeah.
As to who's gonna be responsible, cause that will affect, you know, the city in general.
It will, I, the, the state does acknowledge that they're, they are the, the source of the traffic generation under this permit, so.
That's the question.
Yeah.
So that's the only other traffic question I have.
Yeah.
So I, I, can I go back to your traffic? Cause one of the things in your opening letter, it talks about the extension of Marrow Lane will include water sewer, three-phase power, new court, and it would be available for the courthouse facility and other future development along the new street. What have you considered about that, anything or?
The only thing we're aware of is potentially a access to the Railroad Sunrise Trail and maybe a little parking area. But I know there are private, privately owned parcels that will be adjacent to Marrow Lane Extension that could be suitable for other types of developments.
So in the future, that could impact the intersection there greatly as far as travel trips, et cetera, et cetera, that's correct?
Correct, but I mean, at this point, you know, the city expressed plans to, you know, further development in that area, but we're not at the point of discussion.
We can't plan ahead for that.
Yeah, I understand that, it's just something just, for the record.
Yes, we're aware.
That we mentioned it.
Yeah, any subsequent development would have to go through a traffic analysis, an additional traffic analysis.
Yeah, so the, actually, when you actually turn into the courthouse, which is a nothing intersection now, for the next developer down the line, it is a important intersection.
Certainly.
Or more importantly.
Yeah.
So it would be important for the city to plan ahead for the future development, so that it doesn't.
The city planners could plan, whoa.
So as long as we're building a new intersection, a new road, make it suitable for future.
Plan is my middle name.
There you go.
There are no bike lanes or anything, I don't know, this is your problem or not, but there are no bike lanes or anything on the road, drive?
I'm just kidding, I'm sorry, I know I can't.
If you play your cards right, maybe we got a microphone.
Uh, so no, there are no bike lanes planned currently, we really had to stay within a certain width of the roadway to stay within, under the threshold for the DEP permit to meet the timely, timeframe that, the course, we're looking for us to do this in, so no. But there's nothing that's gonna preclude us for adding one in the future, or a multi-use path in the future or something like that.
And there's a sidewalk plan?
Yes, there is a sidewalk and I will have to ask the engineer if it's on that side for any specific reason or if it would just be easier to not have pedestrians crossing over to have it be on that same side, I don't know the answer to that.
So, so the sidewalk is designed to go with High Street to the courthouse?
There is, the road is proposing a sidewalk from High Street to the courthouse, yes.
So the bikers would just use the sidewalk for now, or the road?
Or the road.
Right, cause they're giving bike places to park your bike, so that's good.
Well, I, I think he was talking about motorcycles.
No, he had both, he's got both.
There, there are some bike racks as well.
Bike racks, yeah.
Yeah.
We addressed it.
E-bikes, you know.
I might ask a question about something else other than traffic, am I allowed to do that?
Certainly.
I got a whole list, so go ahead.
There's a, there's a thing that comes in from WISE Environmental Services.
Yes.
Talks about protective resources report, blah blah, and it goes on for nine pages, which, and it seems very thorough. My question is, what's the bottom line for the city on that, or for this development? What, you know, does it have something that needs to be taken care of or, what's the deal? Or do we know?
Cause there was a trail shown on the plan and it shows a plan, it was page two thirty of two seventy-nine. And I was wondering, that was another thing I was wondering, it shows this trail, so, and then it's, and then somewhere else in the package, it clearly states that this project will have no impact on the public's access to Card Brook and the natural resources, so I just couldn't figure that out either.
Is that a recognized trail?
I don't know, it's marked on there.
I believe it's existing.
It exists, but only barely.
I mean, so like a deer tracker or something?
Yeah, yeah, you, you could, you could walk in there, but I wouldn't even try to take a vehicle through there.
There, there's a culvert here and then it's, you, you can't even really see, it's right out in the open field out in here, yeah.
So it's a trail, it's really not a trail?
Yeah, no, it exists.
Could someday be a trail, a real trail.
Okay.
Encampment trail.
Okay, cause that's what, when it said trail, I was like, is that a pedestrian trail, are people walking around in there, so now?
No, they did do a, an extensive study on, on, you know, potential vernal pools and there were no vernal pools identified. They did the, the, the surveys in the spring, so there are no wetlands of special significance. And so, you know, basically meet the urban impaired stream standards for Card Brook.
So along that line, one of my questions related to that is, once the building is completed and it's in use and people walk around the parking lot, cause they're, you know, waiting in between and there's, I saw two picnic bench, two benches, no, I didn't see any picnic tables on the plan, but maybe you're gonna put them in, so they're gonna wanna wander, they're gonna meander around, are they gonna meander down to the brook? Is there gonna be a, a like, don't go to the brook, or is it, is it elevated such that it's really not accessible to them? Or are they gonna be hopping over the parking lot, you know, to try to get down to it?
It, it's accessible, but if there's as many ticks there as there were this past summer, you, not a lot of people are probably gonna be, the grass was that high.
But it's not gonna be like, don't go, if they go, it's on their own, and it's not gonna be like, here's a path.
No, there's no, no identified paths or anything like that. There are obviously, you know, I mean, it's, it's a bigger parcel than is being developed, I think the whole developed area is around five acres. But they don't plan to, you know, basically they're gonna leave everything outside the development natural and, 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 you know, it'll continue to grow up. This is kind of a wet meadow and then everything around here will remain as woods.
Thomas, on the north side of the building, you have the automatic gate, sliding gate. I notice on the checklist for your TRT, you mentioned Knox boxes, or Knox box.
There'll be multiple Knox boxes.
One on the gate, one on the building, or, you know?
So it's gonna be on the, it's gonna be on the building for the door right there for the gate.
Okay.
They are on the plan too.
Pardon me?
They didn't note, note, note them on the plan, I believe.
Just double checking, so.
Yeah, there'll be one on the front of the building as well.
Yeah, okay.
What about the gate at the front of the drive? When they come in, the swing gate, it says be, be, be proposed twenty-eight foot vehicular swing gate.
Yeah, and that's just something that they wanted to have, I'm not sure how much they'll actually use it, but if the, the facility is shut down at night and they don't want vehicles going in there, it's just a manual swing gate. That will be, it would be something that, you know, it, it would keep a vehicle out.
It's just a, a visual barrier, but not really something that, like the fire department can get in and?
Oh no, they'll, they'll be putting a Knox lock.
Okay.
On the gate, so.
All right, and if somebody pulls in, that's, there's sufficient room for them to turn around, if they go pull in and go, oh, I can't get in here, they can?
Correct, yeah, the, the gate would be here.
It's back far enough?
Yeah.
How far do you think that is back there? Probably like thirty-five, forty feet maybe?
Yeah, this is, this is fifty feet from center line to just before the gate, so.
Okay.
They would have a little over fifty feet there into the road, yeah.
That's a good thing. On dumpsters, it shows, should I go now, since?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, on the dumpsters on this page, it shows that the dumpster and the concrete pad next to, I guess you said, is gonna be a generator and it says the proposed pad will have a chain link fence screening, just chain link, is it gonna be?
It, it, and it has the, the fence detail shows the, the, you know, the vinyl privacy slats, HDP.
It's a C, C detail, but I kept, I gave up looking, so I got, I got out of there.
Yeah.
And then the propane tanks are, weren't they adjacent to it or something?
Let me find the utility plan.
I think that was on the, they're right next to it, right?
Right next to it here, yeah. And they're proposed to be underground.
Okay, now it's a good place for the person to park for, for access.
Yeah, we did extend this out far enough for, to be a, a better turnaround and.
Your lighting plan, you have the big tall poles, are, are they gonna remain on, on, all night? I, I mean, there was so much to read, I was trying to find stuff, but maybe you could tell me faster, is they gonna remain on all night for security purposes? Or after hours, are they gonna reduce?
Um, I don't believe they're, they're going to remain fully lit all night, but I can double check on that. I'm quite certain that came up on the last one we did and, and, yeah, they did.
You'll check, okay. And you said you think there probably gonna be some picnic tables for people to sit and eat their lunches or whatever, and I'm just curious, they're gonna go by those benches?
Yeah, I mean, at, at least initially, what we have is a, for the employees, there's a little outdoor use area with a picnic table down here.
Oh, that's where it is, okay, for the employees.
For the public, there are, you know, some benches, there's gonna be some granite benches here and then there's another area which would be.
Oh, okay.
You know, suitable for a smoking area back here with a couple more benches.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask about, a smoking area for people, okay.
Yeah.
Sarah, I'll ask you a question. I know we don't have the road plan from High Street to the site, is there streetlights proposed for that road? Okay. All right.
He was ready for you. Got a well-oiled tea going.
I'm done.
Anything down the other end of the data?
I'm good down here.
Mark?
Nope, we're set.
Okay. One question, on section ten on easements and road agreements, and you had mentioned in your introduction that the state is, is looking to get a, a right of way through the LL Bean property. And says if, if Marrow Lane and High Street intersection is blocked, I understand why you're doing that. I think luckily, I can't remember that intersection ever being blocked, I hope it won't.
Yeah, and it's probably, yeah, hopefully never used, but they'd like to have some sort of option.
Yeah, just, maybe one thing to keep in mind, the city is, if, if that happens and you do use, cause right now LL Bean has the right in, right out. It was a sign as right in, right out, over the years, they, they haven't done a very good job of keeping it properly signed because you have, and if, for some reason the courthouse had to use that intersection, I mean, the southbound traffic on High Street is not supposed to be taking left turns into that.
Yeah.
They often do, because for one thing, there's no signage saying no left turn.
Yeah.
And conversely, coming out, they're not supposed to be taking a left turn and head south. Again, I mean, the intersection is kind of designed to discourage that, but there's no signage, like I say, luckily, that signalized intersection, I don't think has ever been blocked, so hopefully that never happens.
Yeah, yeah.
The one thing, I mean, I guess more for information than anything on, oh, it's on a couple of maps, but on appendix D, it, it points out that there's, I guess, three paper streets, Gilly Street, Card Drive and Bigford. It's on, I know it's on, it's on C one hundred, but it's in section ten, the Herrick and Salisbury little diagram.
Yeah.
Except for the, the D.
Appendix D. Appendix D.
Yeah. Could you give me any information on that, because?
I, I really don't have any information on that, it does appear that the, there, there are utilities in that area. If anybody here can assist me, I know, you know, that, that was identified as part of the boundary survey that Herrick and Salisbury did. There certainly is no apparent development through here, although.
I mean, the, the Gilly Street, actually, you look on the bigger map and, and piecing together, going on the city website, and that actually comes out through the trailer car.
It, it does, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, that's the street that the state's not thinking of using at any point.
That's correct, no, they don't have any, they're keeping everything up above that, that goes right through that, those wetland areas, so.
I mean, it, where they, when they came in existence, I, I've been here for fifty years and this is the first time I've ever known any of that. It looks like Bigford actually goes into resort way, by the looks of it, but just curious more than anything.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I would guess if you transpose the, the map.
I, I would guess if you transpose the, the map that shows where the pa, where the trail is.
Yeah.
It's pretty close to where Gilly Street is.
Yeah.
I'm guessing, I'm guessing the, the remnants of that trail is what they're calling Gilly Street.
Okay.
And that's all in the property that's being, the bigger property that's being developed, right?
Correct, yeah.
I mean, so all, all that stuff is on, so do you have complete control, is my point?
Yeah, I mean, the city and, and, you know, it certainly have, you know, whatever rights there are to the right-of-way for the utilities and so forth, but, yeah, it is going right through the state's property.
I think the, I'm just saying, the Gilly Street would actually be on the state's property.
Yeah.
The other two are, are off.
Off the property, yeah.
Bickford may be a little on it, but anyway, thank you. Any other questions? Any comments from the staff? I'll open a public hearing. If anybody has any questions about the courthouse, now's your time to ask. And I'll close the public hearing. Somebody like to make a motion?
Sure, make a motion to accept the preliminary plan, accept the preliminary plan review of a major use site development titled Hancock Traditional Center for Applicant State of Maine Traditional Branch and Owner State of Maine.
Second.
Oh, Cleveland? Are you voting that, or are you?
I don't think I'm voting tonight, right?
What's that?
Am I voting tonight?
Yes, are you comfortable enough? I mean, you were a little late, but you're...
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Five oh.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Item number three, preliminary plan review.
Just one comment, if, if this traffic analysis thing that they're talking about comes in earlier than you would normally distribute it to us, can you distribute it earlier?
I'll check.
That'd be great.
Okay, I'll make a note of that.
Because it's, I anticipate it being large.
Yeah.
I can hardly wait.
That makes one of us.
I mean, is the plan to come back next month, or don't know enough about it at this point?
Well, no, that, that's a good question. Um, I, I guess our, our plan is to, to kind of keep the ball rolling, understanding that you haven't really seen the road design yet and that there's still some, um, information forthcoming on the traffic. Um, I don't know what your comfort level would be to, to, you know, issue a, a final approval with some conditions, um, in that regard, or, um, do we need to cool our heels a little bit and let things catch up, or what are your, I guess, we, we would accept any guidance, I guess, that you'd have.
Well, I mean, we certainly don't want to delay the state's progress.
Yeah.
Obviously, I mean, the traffic analysis and that part of it, I mean, there's always a lot of information in that, and, I mean, if that can get to us as soon as possible, but, I mean, I...
Yeah, okay, that'll be our focus, and, uh, um, understanding that there will be, you know, the city involvement and through the whole traffic permitting process as well, but, um, as the board. John, are you still there?
We are still here.
Any anti...
We're...
Yeah, timeline on, on the traffic assessment and...
Yeah, so, I'm anticipating, um, that we'll have a scoping meeting sometime in the next couple of weeks, and then once we have the scoping meeting, we'll, we'll sort of get our marching orders on what needs to be studied, you know, what the traffic study will be, and we'll get to work on that, um, and probably get that back in, hopefully within three, you know, three or four weeks, get that back in. So, that section seven part of the traffic movement, the study that you're all looking for, that's when we would submit that, so. Because we have a scoping meeting in a couple of weeks, after that, we submit the, the actual traffic study probably three to four weeks after that. Sooner we can, but...
So, it probably goes like December.
I was just going to say, it sounds like December.
Yeah, it, it probably, um, yeah, and I know the, the end, um, goal is to, um, you know, have the final design finished up and have the project out to bid in, in early February, so I think we can accommodate that timeframe in between, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, guys.
Item number three, preliminary plan review of a major use site development titled Elser Tractor and Equipment for applicant owner Michael Saucier. He claims to construct a commercial tractor and power equipment sales and service facility. The subject property is approximately 10-acre lot located at 500 High Street, tax map 11, Lot 7, in a commercial zoning district. Is someone here representing Elser Tractor and some equipment, other than the person that just walked in the door?
Mr. Jeff Allen, can you help me engineer the...
And I'm Brian Foster, I'm a veteran for Mr. Oliver's, Elser Tractor.
So, who's starting?
I think we're all, Jeff, try and connect his computer real quick. All right, I'll pick things up. So, this project came last month, so you have kind of an initial idea of the premise, the tractor supply and, uh, sales store, and it's located off of Route 3, um, right past the Martin's Shopping Plaza, towards the island. So, last month, uh, we had a lot of updates to do to the plan, putting more information on the site plan, making sure our utilities and, um, other details were called out, and so we have updated the plans to reflect a lot of those comments from staff and TRT and the board. So, in Site Plan C, uh, 0.1, it's the main site plan. Um, you can see the updated stormwater plan, so there's new stormwater infrastructure that Jeff will describes in a minute. Uh, we have located the, um, snow, uh, removal spots, um, as requested. There is a propane tank, um, there's, or with bollards, um, on it, and then, or in front of it, shown on the plan, and then we also, um, show where the tractor display area is going to be. Up in the top right corner.
Yeah, it's shown on the screen, the trading along the street.
And then, we numbered the parking spaces, um, just counting out how many there are, so we have 14 parking spaces, um, with two ADA accessible spots, and then, I think, what else was requested? Make sure the grading, the contours, the wetlands are now on that plan, too. They're also on the existing rating plan, and then, I believe that was it for the plan itself, but then within the narrative, we also provided, um, updated, um, landscaping, so, uh, we provide more details on the signage, um, it, the total signage si- size, if you measure the sign faces itself, um, is 96 square feet to comply with the sign ordinance for the commercial zone, um, and then there's also, um, the height, the sign is 20 feet, which is less than the, um, maximum for that zone as well. Um, provide a photo of what the Topson store looks like as an idea of what the finished landscaping looks like, and there'll be less tractors in front of the store, they'll be located just to that area specified on the plan, um, just to give you a feel of what the sign landscaping looks like, and then what the front of the lot is. And I gotta let Jeff go into stormwater in just a minute, and then we also provide updated traffic, um, information, particularly looking at, um, trip, like, uh, provide more detail on the accidents, historical accidents that have occurred right near the site, detailing what kinds of accidents those were, and, um, and also talking about the, I think it was what the site distance is actually in here, and then we also provided, uh, I thought I did, but just providing more of an explanation on when the peak hour for this particular site is, it's not the same as the peak hour for the road. The peak hour for this use based on the Topson traffic counts was between noon and 1:00, um, well, for Route 3, it's typically between 4:00 and 6:00, somewhere in the peak hour range. Um, there was a request for queuing information, um, and I, I can put it in the, the application for final, but it was just an interesting way of trying to do it where I just historically know peak season, the queuing from the Martin's light backs all the way up sometimes to the Cheese House light, um, in Trenton, so I stopped at Coastal Car Care, and an average vehicle size, uh, if you backed up all the way there, would be somewhere between 90 and under 20 vehicles, um, during peak season queuing, during peak hour, um, you know, it's not peak, like, backing up that far all the time, but, um, I didn't know if there would be like an additional part to that that the board would like to see, like, we know that it's busy and backs up there, but like...
It'd be nice to write it up.
Well, right, but, but if they wanted an additional piece of that information, or if you just wanted me to write it up and put it in?
Well, I don't, yeah, I mean, I guess the question is, you know, you, you, you know, there's, there's going to be an impact there, so identify the impact, and then what can you do about it, if anything?
Okay, yeah, so I can write a little bit more about that.
I mean, that's always the question, right? You know, if there's an impact, how is it mitigated?
Yeah, all right, so I can write that up.
If you can, and maybe you can't. Maybe it's just the way life is.
I think, I suspect that'll be what I, I say, but... But, yeah, I do believe that covered the top things that are on, on top of mind that we updated from the last time. And then, Jeff, would you like to go into the stormwater explanation a little bit more thoroughly?
Sure. Um, for the stormwater, um, it's all, all the stormwater from the site is going to feed to an underground stormwater treatment system here, and that's brought in by, uh, putting curbing all along the sides of the property, except for the, the end here will, will not be curved, uh, because, so we can plow the snow out that way. But along the, the outside here and along the outside here are curving, so the water will flow down away from the building and up to the curb, and I've got a catch basin in here, another one over on this side to catch the south side of the site, and then another one here to catch it before it comes into, uh, goes out onto the roadway. And this, these two catch basins here, uh, will directly to the underground detention system. I looked at, I took the Hydracad, a Hydracad model, which is based on TR-55, the old Army Corps model, and looked at, uh, the runoff before the site and the runoff after the site. Um, I think it's a 2.7 and a 5.4-inch storm, which is roughly equivalent to like a two-year storm and a 25-year storm. What I found was, uh, the 25-year storm is easy to attenuate. Uh, pre-development is like two and a half CFS going, uh, off the site. Post-development, it's about, uh, 2.24, I think. So, there's a little bit of a decrease during that, that big storm event. During the smaller, uh, 2.7-inch storm, there's about a little under 1 CFS going off, and post-development, I had to go to 1.3, I think. Uh, so it's a small increase. Uh, because those are so different, um, I, you know, my goal was to try to have a decrease on both sides, but this whole area downstream, where this is out flooding here, is all wetland. So, the increase of about half or three tenths of a CFS is just going to discharge into that wetland and do nothing. It's, you know, well, it isn't going to increase any flooding because it's, it's just a, a de minimis increase in there. So, and the wetlands, again, as you know, go all the way through the property, all the way down to the end here. So, there is a, a, a small increase during the two-year storm. You know, if that's okay, we'll, we'll call that good.
Well, you talked about that, but are your figures in written form someplace? Because I can't find them.
No, no, they were not in there. I, I didn't get it, uh, written up, time to get it to Matt, uh, to include that in there, so we'll, I will include that in at the final. Um, we could look at the, the Hydracad model, and I'll show you the, the actual numbers in there, but it's, it's, I didn't get it summarized in time.
Okay. I think Matt's our expert in that, but I, I, I mean, you, you talked about, you know, a little bit of an increase in one area, I mean, I...
During the smaller storms, yes, because when you're, the outlet control structure, you're, you're tapering it down. I think the ordinance requires a minimum of 15-inch culvert, so the only way I could slow the water down any is I put a cap on the end of the culvert with a, it'll have a V-notch weir in it, and so at lower flows, it's, there's less water coming out, but you can't taper it down too tight, otherwise you get three blades of grass that go in and, and block your V-notch weir, so...
Such a small number, anyway. It's not very big flow at all, so...
Yeah, it's, it's 3, 0.3 or 0.5 CFS is equivalent to, um, a couple garden hoses.
It's not much.
Yeah. And that would last for a couple hours.
Doesn't bother you?
But, yeah, in the final example, I certainly will get a, a summary table in there.
Okay, I mean, I would guess, I would guess, I mean, if there is an increase, I'm doing, we'll have to discuss it now, but if there, even a slight increase, is that going to need a waiver, just for something to think about for final?
I'll verify, but, yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions, or?
Any other questions on stormwater, all these up there?
I, I just thought, not for stormwater, really, but, um, I also put just the door locations on the site plan, um, the little inset piece. I think it was the same C. 0.1, or C. 1.
This, uh, has the building sort of backwards from what I had on the plan, and you can see the, uh, the main entrance, front entrance is here, and this, uh, there's another door on the side down here, and then, uh, into the service area in the back of the building, we've got a, a garage door here and a man door there, and on the other end, there's a similar arrangement with a, a garage door in the middle and a man door on the corner.
Is there anywhere on the plan that shows us, again, what we wanted to see was, where are the sales and service areas? How, what's the layout of the building interior? I, I didn't happen to find it.
There, we do have architectural plans, if you want to wait, I can call that up. I didn't know the planning boards generally look at architectural...
Well, we had said last time when we were talking that it, it would be nice to know how the interior of the building is set up for people flow, you know, where they're coming in and out of, what's the areas that they're coming in and out of, and that's...
Yeah, the front end of the store, this, this part is sales.
It is, it doesn't say that, so we can't assume that.
Well, I, I'm, so I'm telling you, but it's, this is sales and then the services in back. That, the service needs the garage doors to get in. Uh, I can put a label on the plan if that would be helpful, I guess, but that's, uh, and so customers will come in and leave the front door primarily. There's a door on the side, um, that they could use, but primarily, uh, they'll look around the yard, we'll have some tractors on display in the yard, and then, um, come into, come into the sales area to speak with a, a salesperson and make up...
So, how many, how many employees are you proposing?
I think there are eight, six to eight.
Six to eight, so that's how come your parking was limited to the, the 12, if there's six?
Right.
So, if you have eight employees, are you going to have more parking spaces?
Right, we actually have, I mean...
Said you had 14, I think.
We have 14 parking spaces.
14, so, but not 16, right?
Right, but most employees will not bring two vehicles to work.
No, I was just wondering, because he, by using the, the motor vehicles and boat sails and whatnot, it would be two per employee proposed, that's why I'm wondering.
Yeah.
If you have six, that's fine, seven is fine, but eight, you wouldn't have sufficient parking?
We, we do have some additional area out here we could use as parking, for overflow parking, but I'm hesitant to make it impervious because then I have to treat runoff from it. So, if, if that becomes an issue later on, that we have, don't have enough parking for our customers primarily, then, uh, we could do something like reinforced turf or something out there that would...
I'll just add in, the number that I was working for, the application was just six, but if eight is a... but if eight is a possibility, then what I ought to add is a deferment request for that parking, the, the extra parking that would be needed for the eighth employee.
When you talk about the number of employees, are those employees on site all the time? I mean, or are there only five employees?
Six, the six would be on site all the time.
I mean, there would always be six people there. There are six employees there, sorry.
Yeah, I was just wondering how it complies with the ordinance, cause it specifically requests two per, unless you come up with some reason why, or some extenuating circumstances.
Yeah, I think the reason we say eight is, who knows, in, you know, five years, maybe, you know, there's a need to add an employee, now you have seven, and that's why we have the, sort of, that put an area for deferred parking in the event that employee goes up and there's not adequate parking with the, with what was-
I think it would be useful to, to be specific, and say, you know, six full-time equivalents, you know, or whatever, or at, at all the time.
Yeah, and if you expand, then you're gonna have to-
That's what the, yeah.
Yeah, now's the time to plan big. You know, if you're planning bigger, then now's the time to do it and not wait till later and have to make some revisions.
Yeah, and we've got them called, the deferred parking spaces are, is called out on the plan here, pointing to this, this area here.
But that would not be paved, it would just be nothing right now.
It would be retained, it would be retained for parking if we need it later.
And if you had to pave it, you're saying that that would then kick in a, a problem with the runoff?
We'd have, we'd have to go through the numbers again, but, you know, having a model built, it's, it's not a big deal to change that. Again, it would be in the area that's, that's being collected and being treated. And there is, with, with this HydroCAD model, there's a plus or minus 20%, it's not accurate, none of them are. So, you know, I think we have, yeah, it's a model, it's, it's a best guess calculation. And so we certainly, by adding two or four spaces, would not have to go back and redo the model, I guess.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get at, that if you, if you want it, it should be there so we don't have to rethink this in the future. You know what I mean?
Right, we, so figure we're gonna have it, but don't, don't pave it. Or, what if I say that we're going to put, if we pave that, if we decide to use that, we'll do something like a grass pave, which is a, a pervious mat that you put down, and they park fire trucks on it, you know, when they, when they need to. It's a reinforced turf, but it grows grass, but it has gravel underneath, so it's not impervious. So it would, hydraulically, it, it would act the same as a lawn, which is what is there now. So I think that's probably the, the solution we'd look at.
Then that would give us something to chew on. That would give us, yeah, and if it's, if it's listed on there, that's what it's gonna be, then that gives us a reason to consider it.
So we'll just note that that is going to be grass paved, if, and will be developed if necessary.
Would you have, for parking, would you have additional room on the south side of the showroom?
I believe they wanna use that in this area over here.
Right, I mean, right next to the building?
They're, they're using it for display area, I think, but, I mean-
I mean, there would be room for an employee to park there, it's just not gonna be designated. It's, it's, you know, in order to keep the, the traffic, the flow of traffic as needed for tractor trailers to come in and out. But it certainly, if it was an area that we knew we didn't have any deliveries for a day, that employee may park there, but it's not gonna be-
Or a sandwich delivery person, or something.
But, but I believe, I was understanding the ordinance that, you know, the, the amount of parking was based on the employees, but the reason we created the deferred parking is because that, that there was some sort of question as whether or not that would be the, the right comparison to go based on a hope shop, or A T P, you know, if somebody came and said, well, this is different, we need to actually have more of that. Deferred parking was created for, for that purpose.
I get that, I just don't want you to have a situation where all of a sudden you have eight employees, and now you're not in compliance, so.
And I could just address it through the parking deferment request, that's in the ordinance.
I mean, I would ask that, or may, maybe give, next meeting, give us information on how, I mean, how many parking places are required under the ordinance, and what the alternatives are.
They went with two, they went with two per employee, that's the whole point.
Yes, two per employee, so it's almost better if you pick a number-
Right, just pick a number.
-to go with, and then it expands in the future.
Seven is good.
Yeah, so make sure, just say seven, and then if it expands in the future-
Yeah, I just don't want it to be expensive and time consuming for them in the future, should they expand. Sometimes it's better to, like I said, think big, and then if you don't get there, you haven't, as long as he can resolve the problem now, takes it away.
Definitely, and that's great advice, and they can take it or leave it.
And where do delivery trucks turn around?
I have got a diagram for that.
Good.
And it's actually on this one, because you wanted everything on one plan, and it's, that's just crazy amount of stuff on there. So, here's a truck coming down from Elsworth, Montana, and these two lines represent the front tires and the rear tires. So they swing wide, come across, around here, and the front of the vehicle will be, you can see the, the representation of the, the tractor trailer truck here. Be at one side over here, and the, the, the rear tires on the tractor, or on the trailer, will be back here. Again, they pull in, they're real tight on this corner, they come up in here, and then can back into where they would likely unload over in this area.
Is that where the big doors are?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And then leaving is, you know, they would be hugging the outside corner here, hugging the inside corner here, and then when they get back out.
So do you have, is that area that's paved, is there like curbing, or is it just flat in case they kinda go over? Cause it looks like you're just tight in there.
We're very close.
But what, what, what are they gonna be driving over? Curbing, or just-
It'll be, no, there's no curbing out there, yeah. The only curbing is back on the site itself, just to direct my stormwater to where it needs to go.
And you couldn't make it a little wider so that they fit?
I don't wanna make it any wider, because that's more impervious area and more wetland impact, so. We're trying, trying to do it, you know, there's a lot of wetland impact here, and every square foot that we can shave off saves, saves money, saves headaches with, with D E P permitting.
Did you mention where the dumpster was gonna be?
Yeah.
Cause I think, if I remember this correctly, the last meeting, you were planning on moving the dumpster around the lot?
Yep, this, it's in the corner right here. We've got the dumpster showing right here, and we have a privacy fence in front of it. The privacy fence is almost illegible, but it's, it's this lighter line right here.
So you're gonna leave it in one place?
Yes.
Oh, that, what?
They'll move behind the fence, so like laterally, so it'll always be blocked by the-
Each time they dump it, it could shift-
Okay, but that was one of-
A little bit within that general corridor, but it'll be shielded off from-
Oh yeah, I mean, last one, that sounded like you were gonna move it around the lot.
No.
No, I had just said that if they're gonna have an area, that should be hashed out, like the, like where you're gonna have storage, show us that that's where it's gonna be within that area, then you're consistent, then you're not outside, then you've defined where the possibilities are.
We can put a hatch, hatch in there.
I mean, I think the, the discussion around the dumpster really was more not within an enclosure, which would be limiting it to, you know, to move it five feet one way or the other. It could move, it will, the plan for it would be in that general area, but we put the, the screening there just to, you know, block it from where it might-
Yeah, but if you, like I'm saying, if you just clarify that with, that screening's great, glad you're doing that, cause last time you didn't want anything, so now you have something, but just show us, just like you did with where your storage is gonna be on property, just show us it's gonna always stay in that area, so that you don't get, you know, in a situation where, oh, it's over there. Well, we didn't know it was gonna be over there, because we may forget, and it's supposed to be right there. So give yourself some leeway, if you need to have it.
Yeah, the intent really was to be able to get, to be able to move the dumpster to see, from that area, anywhere along the back of the building, it would still be shielded, so.
Well, we need to know where.
Okay.
We'd like to know where.
We, we definitely oversized the fence here, because a lot of times you just have a dumpster enclosure, but having an oversized fence would prevent that view from-
Right, that's great, I mean, the fence is good.
Certainly from one, from the road.
And that, what kind of fence is that?
We just say privacy fence, usually we use like a vinyl stockade.
Privacy, okay. Yeah, it was hard to see, I did not find that.
It's not on this plan, it's very busy.
Whatever happened with the, I think last time we talked about the, the overhangs, whether they were gonna have storage under them with vehicles, with fuel, and how did that affect, like whether or not it ended up being, is that sprinkled, not sprinkled? What was that whole discussion? How did that go? Where did we end up?
I, I know the building is, is, specifically, the, the intent is to be under 12,000 square feet, so we didn't need to sprinkle that. So that's, that's what we've done.
So the state does not recognize the overhangs as part of the building?
Okay, so that was addressed by, and that's okay, by the fire marshal?
Is that what the note on your TRT report is, that you're waiting for a letter from the fire marshal's office?
Yeah, that was what that was, I finally got confirmation.
I was noticing that fire waiting for state fire marshal will submit letters for the files, that what you were waiting for?
Yeah, so basically, I contacted them about their other property that they have that went through the state, and they did not recognize the overhangs.
Okay.
Okay.
So I have a question. Last time, we talked about some wording that was not applicable, such as emergency vehicle access limited with existing conditions to existing entrance. It's still in your plan?
Oh, I thought it was applicable, cause the ordinance asks for that detail, so I left it in there.
Is it something you're gonna remove?
It's requested in the ordinance of what, what emergency access looks like on the existing property, and that's like what that describes, is there's an existing drive, and that's how an emergency vehicle would have to access the property.
Okay, so I, it, cause I asked the question last, last time, and I believe it said it wasn't applicable. I believe that was the answer, when an emergency vehicle access is limited with existing conditions to the existing entrance suitable for access, that you weren't gonna use that entrance because of the-
We're not, well, it's gonna be come to the driveway, but like right now, as the existing condition is, if an emergency vehicle had to access the lot, like it would have to go through what's the existing drive that's there, and that's all it's saying.
Okay, so the wording is staying?
I mean, I can make it sound better, but yeah.
That would be a good idea, I'm really confused with that wording. I'm really confused with that wording. And then I have one other question for you. I notice on, let's see, I think it's the site plan, C. 0.1, you have included a new sign and light. I see it, it's listed right there alongside the road. What I do not see, and whether it's something you can produce or eventually, is in your photometric, there is nothing there for that sign. Now, whether that sign and the light is gonna impact Route three or not, you probably ought to have some information on that.
I agree with the light, I don't think the sign is lit up, is that, it's just a-
It does light up. It doesn't produce light, like the light is just a, it's kinda lit up on the inside, so it-
It's internally lit.
That the sign doesn't have a light in it at all?
No, it does, it does lighten it, so we have to include that.
Okay, does it, is it required to have a photometric calculation?
If there were external lights, I believe, but I don't think it, I don't think the internal light-
Okay, so it's all internal light?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you.
I got, I got more. You know me, I got more. Question on your snow areas, you throw the word snow in three spots, but I don't think, do you mean that they, the snow fits in those spots, or does it go outside?
In that general area. I, I don't know the size of the snow, it's gonna depend on the snowfall during the year. But what, what this generally indicates is that when you're plowing the yard, the snow will be plowed out here beyond the, the pavement, so it'll drain down back here. The exact measurement of the snow-
Oh, I'm not, I'm not asking for that. My curiosity would be, as the snow is pushed into those three locations, how is that bulk of snow affecting the wetlands and your runoff? And because now that snow is coming off a parking lot, and how, show me how that's gonna be dealt with. Or, or are you gonna remove it, or what?
The, I can go from individually, this one, as it melts, will go down this grating ditch here. Again, this one will go again down the ditch, and I believe, this is actually in an upwind area here, maybe. If not, it will be, be back there. And this one is in an existing wetland area, but I, I put them here simply because, so they wouldn't block the culverts going through. This is another new thing that we have heard from our Army Corps of Engineers, that we may have to have multiple culverts in there, because the little critters have to get from one side of the wetland to the other. This is not for hydraulic flow, this is for critter flow.
Uh huh.
That'll make this stuff up, it's, it's the Army Corps of Engineers.
They do a lot of it out west, I can tell you that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just curious, because that does impact, you know, the, the, the amount of snow that's pushed into those locations, where they are, and where they flow to matters, and I'm still not perfectly clear on that aspect.
What, what is your, what is your intent?
Well, because you said that one, you think it's high, but you're not sure, and it's going to, not that one, you said that's going into a ditch?
This one is just going out onto the grass, and which it's, we've got a, a level area out there, and then as we go here, you can see the contour lines kinda dip down a little bit, so it's a mild decrease there.
So does your stormwater-
If they get stuck, they've got a tractor handy.
Does your stormwater flow show where those areas would drain to?
They would drain down to the wetland. The back of the store is the, is the only part of the store that is not treated in the stormwater system. Because there's, we can put, or this, this small area back here, we can put gutters on the back of the store, it's gonna get the roof runoff, and then we run the roof runoff off to the side, hit the curb and go down. But this paved area, that's about two or three feet wide in the back of the store, is not treated for stormwater.
And neither would either of the other two snow locations.
That's right.
So is there anywhere where you could push the snow that would be put into the treated area of stormwater runoff?
If we left it on the, on the yard here, but that'd be difficult to do, because you've gotta access the, the big garage doors at the end of the building. Cause remember, this, there's a garage door here, there's a garage door here, so we could pack some of it on here, but again, it's, it's, it's not an intensive rain event that would create the snow. I mean, the snow's gonna melt gradually.
But, yeah, but it's still gonna melt and go into the wetlands.
Yeah.
From a parking lot, not, you're pushing it from the lot, and it's not getting-
Treatment?
Treatment.
What I could do is put some sort of a, a stone berm across here to create some ponding within the ditch, and that would allow some settlement there that would remove the sand, salt, you know, put a, a stone check dam in here. And again, I could put another stone check dam down here in this area. So I think that would-
And the one in the front, by the front of the drive?
You're tough.
I know, well, hey, that's my job.
We have equipment, we can put snow wherever we want to put snow. Wherever you want us to put snow, that you feel comfortable with, we'll put snow there. It's not like we plow and it's there for good, it's, we have equipment, we have pockets, we have loaders, we have all the equipment to put it in the designated area where we're not gonna have issues, for sure.
Well, that's up to you guys to find those places, and make, and make a plan for that.
Having all kinds of different obstacles to try to put, you know, water where it, it just generally melts with nature, you know?
Well, it's not just water once it's in a parking lot. It, that's where we usually have stormwater runoff that goes into stormwater catch basin or something like that, so that's what, that's the question. So whatever you can do to, to, to-
Okay, well, we can look at that.
One more question, hate to ask it. Show that tree line real close all around, which is great, I'm glad you're leaving as many trees as you can, but, right, so, cause that's, the idea is to not disturb anything if possible, keep the tree line there. During, during construction- During construction, if you should have to disturb that base to get your equipment through, you know, construction, sometimes you have to dig things and move things around. What, is there any thought about what you would do to restore? Or would you restore? Because you've made the line nice and tight. Is that really feasible? And what is the plan if it's impacted?
Right, we think, I think it's quite feasible because that's the way the grading works. And meaning, we're tying our contours from the site into some of the existing contours. So, you know, obviously we don't want to clear any more than we have to. And, you know, this area is just cleared for where the septic system is going to go in. I think that's ample room to get in there and work because they're going to do, you know, coming from the site to get in there and haul in materials for the septic system.
I'm just saying, if by chance you had to back it out, do you have a plan for corrective actions? Because you, I mean, your site plan shows it pretty snug, so...
Oh, I mean, we've got 10 feet either side here.
As long as you're comfortable with that, it doesn't exceed it.
I'd say the project's also going through permitting with DEP and Army Corps. And so like if we remove more than they think the plan shows, then we would have to answer to them for a plan.
Okay, good, good. Okay, good. That answers that.
Real quick.
Yeah, I'm done.
This is actually a question for you, I suppose, staff people. The letter that they get from the, and this is from the main community bank, saying that they had money to do this, does a dollar amount have to be in that letter?
I don't think it generally is.
It really should be, but it doesn't really...
Well, I mean, because it says, has the capacity. It's kind of like, you know...
Then it has the capacity to...
Yeah, I mean, you know, the page before that says it's a million, whatever it said.
Because construction prices do change, so it's difficult to narrow...
Well, everything changes.
So it's hard to...
Would you check to see whether or not that we have to have that? Because I think in some other ordinance that we might be considering, I think that actually has dollar amounts that have to be invented, so...
Could that be submitted just to the board, not public? Because that is a, it's kind of a proprietary number.
No, I think, I mean, we could get the bank to just say that if the construction cost is 1.1 million, then, you know, the applicant has the ability to pay the project with 1.1 million dollars. Not asking for like his actual bank records or how much money he's got.
I was just thinking redacting it from public documents.
Well, technically, it's already in there, but it's the 1.1 million that we estimate.
It's in there already, okay.
Nice try.
I'm late to the game. I'm sorry.
The, you talk about public sewer and public water and so forth? And you kind of leave it up in the air, so to speak? Has that been resolved or will it be resolved before?
I think it's just, I mean, it's really not necessary to be in there. It was just kind of in there already. But the project will be developed with private water and septic. And then again, if the opportunity ever came...
And that's something to take care of, do I, they...
That's me.
You, right, okay.
Hello, private water. I guess one note, I forgot to bring that. We did try to contact a well driller, the one that...
Yes, that was the next question. The well driller of notes, right?
I called the well drillers adjusted by staff and they did not return any of my four phone calls.
So you'll be digging personally?
Continue to keep trying to find one.
Hopefully it's not real deep. Just a question on hydro fracking, which was pretty exciting to me. Does that, and really, this is a question for you. Does the fact that you use hydro fracking, does that, does that impact a drawdown cone or anything? Or, you know...
I've never done, I've never...
Never seen that?
Never experienced it, yeah.
Okay. The only question I have is if you do hydro fracking, and I don't know much about hydro fracking, other than for natural gas or whatever. But, you know, if it has an impact on adjacent wells?
Well, it's hydro fracturing.
What's that?
Hydro fracturing.
I'm sorry, hydro.
You're familiar with that math, right? It's just drilling a well.
Yeah, it's how all wells are drilled.
Hydro fracking?
Yes, that's the, that's the method that all wells are drilled, yeah.
Oh, wow. See, I go back to when they did with shovels.
Are you some big reservoir?
Okay, that's it.
A lumpen public hearing, if anybody has any comments or questions from the public? I'll pose a public hearing.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to accept the preliminary, the preliminary plan of a major use site development entitled Ellsworth Tractor Equipment for applicant owner Michael Saucier.
Is that going to be with the follow-up information that we've discussed?
We're only approving, same preliminary plan as concluded.
Right, and they've addressed the list.
I second.
All on paper? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to seeing that out there.
I'll take pictures.
Try and keep me unconfused if you put it.
Item number four, revision to approve major use site plan and major subdivision plan entitled WL Properties LLC. For applicant owner WL Properties LLC. Proposal is to revise the previously approved plans to allow subdivision of existing parcels into 10 lots to be developed in phases. Subject property is approximately 121.8 acre parcel located at the end of Eastwood Lane, Tax Map 22, Lot 13, in the commercial, limited residential and resource protection zoning district. So I'm here representing WL.
Hello, Shelley Lazzott, Architects, Architects and Engineers, representing WL Properties dot co. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. As you know, we got this approval, final approval last year, probably in November. I think it was November.
About a year ago.
About a year ago. And after quite a while of design work and changing things and coming back. And ultimately, the purpose of this was just to separate the property into smaller pieces to allow for varied financing options. Instead of just putting all of the financing into one bank, he was looking to perhaps spread it out into other, to different banks and move in phases so that the entire thing wasn't, he didn't have to come up with the entire funding financing all at once. As it will take a bit of time to construct also. So as you know, the property was already, you know, we already had approval for the 150 units. None of the design of the actual development has changed at all. The only thing that has changed is the land beneath these individual phases. I did some kind of creative shape in order to make sure that each phase was still able to stand on its own so that infrastructure, stormwater treatment, all of those things would not be impacted. That everything that they did would have those provisions while he was progressing through the different phases. The, we had a surveyor, you know, provide the meets and bounds of these. I mean, they're obviously not set and there's no pins or anything at this point. I'm not sure what that will look like in the future. I don't know that there's any intention for him to ever sell these off. It's just to make the financing easier and smoother over the timeframe when he starts, when he wants to construct. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Like I said before, none of the actual design features have changed at all.
Okay, I just, before we get to questions, Tim Pease is in attendance. You there, Tim?
Good evening.
Okay, good. Good on all, I mean, you've seen Tim before. Tim is our attorney. Tim and I had a discussion on this project last week and I thought it was important to, for him to attend. I think there's more, I think, legal issues and maybe board issues. Maybe, Tim, you could give us a little guidance on how to go about this, because it...
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I appreciate the presentation just now. It sheds a little bit of light on the letter that was submitted on September 10th, which explains the reason for the change. And I think that one of the concerns that the city has is that normally when you approve a project, especially a subdivision project, it's one of the requirements in the statute that there's financial and technical capacity. It's item 10 in section 4404 and title 30A. And that financial capacity is for the overall project. And so here you're indicating that the changes are designed to be able to allow different lenders and different financing options. So I think that what the board would want to see is some financial capacity for the overall project, even if it's going to be broken out into different lenders and so forth, that there would need to be some kind of letter from a financial institution or multiple financial institutions about how this is going to play out. Otherwise, I think the board is going to struggle with that particular item on the financial capacity. So I understand the concept, but in the work that I do with banks, it is, I think, unusual for multiple lenders to be stepping in in a project like this. There, the reason they finance projects is for collateral. So if Phase 1 or Lot 1 is financed by Bank A, is Bank B really going to step in and finance Phase 2 or Project 2 or Aspect 2? So I think the, I understand the representation, but I think we need to see it from a financial institution saying that they are willing to back the entire project overall. And normally what we would see is if a developer wanted to do it incrementally, lot by lot, then you would have individual approvals. You'd have Lot 1 would get an approval and you'd come back and get Lot 2 approved. And so I think, you know, in this case, that is a fundamental issue that the planning board would be concerned about.
Thank you. I mean, that was a big part of our discussion, my discussion with Tim, is, I mean, now, now with a break into 10 lots and, I mean, each lot would have its own deed. And, I mean, in your paperwork, I mean, the, the plan is not to sell one of these lots to somebody else, but theoretically it could be. I know that's not the plan, but the possibility exists. And so my question, you know, in developing each one of these lots and if we're going to go that way, then we have to get away from labeling it Phase and just, I know, but just refer to them as lots. But I mean, if somebody else buys a lot, how are they going to abide by, you know, if somebody buys Lot 7, let's say, is the wording in the deed going to cover, you know, phases of lots 1 through 6 and all the roads and the stormwater and...
I completely understand where you're coming from. This is very complicated in my mind and it took me a lot of time to try and figure out how this would work. And I still haven't really, I still don't know that this is 100% the answer. But I do know that, that pretty much the driving factor behind it is he had approached many banks, a lot of very local banks, and they were at their limit of funding for this type of project. And because they, they didn't have the ability to loan as much as he needed for the entire project all at once is what really drove this. So I'm not sure he's looking to spread it around different banks. But I do know that the option, what his option was is he's, I think at this point, he doesn't have a commitment from any single bank at this point. So in order to make it more, they wouldn't be as much risk if they were only doing one phase at a time incrementally. And so once that one phase is complete, then, I mean, I would think that that phase could be, I don't know how this would work either, but if that phase were, like, there was equity in that phase, that could also be added to the next phase to make it so that that would be part of the other phase. I really, I just, I'm not sure. And I don't have the legal background or, you know, the real estate type of background to understand how that fully works.
I mean, Tim, in your letter, you talk about a letter of credit. I mean, and also, instead of breaking, I understand the financing problems, issues. Would it be more acceptable to leave it as one lot in phases? And as they get funding for a particular phase, to re- to reapprove that, or how does a letter of credit? You know, instead of breaking it into 10 different lots, which, you know, they're going to have, you're going to have to have one heck of a lawyer to draft all that up to say, you know, each one of these phases has to contribute to the maintenance of the main road coming in and Lot 10 has to contribute to the maintenance of Lot 7 and say, you know...
Well, I mean, that does make sense if you're looking, if there is, I know you're saying, you know, legally they could sell these lots to others. But I mean, I don't, there's absolutely no intention to do that. I know you can't, intent doesn't necessarily hold any legal standing there. But, so I mean, I'm open to suggestions other than this, if there's something that makes sense. I just, you know, this was the only thing that we could come up with. And I know when Scott had approached some of these banks that they were not willing to do it in phases. And I'm not really sure if it has to do with like they wanted a certain amount of money upfront in order to even lend him the whole amount in phases. So I think that was a big part of it because, you know, if you don't, I think we had a $28 million price tag and I think they wanted 25% or something like that, just in equity there in order to even start the funding. And so that was kind of unexpected. I, don't quote me on those numbers, I'm not sure. But I know that was part of it.
So is, Shelley, is it the bank that is saying, we want this broken up into lots? Is it mainly the bank that is saying that?
I think that's kind of what drove the decision. I mean, I wasn't part of those conversations, so I'm not sure if that was the very specific wording that they had. But a lot of the local banks just don't, you know, unless you're a big time developer with a lot of cash upfront, I'm not sure that they're willing to do the whole thing in one big chunk. And I, and I know that's just hard to, I don't know.
Any suggestions, Tim?
Yeah, and I've seen some situations like this where banks will agree to lend on a phase basis, so three or four different phases. And what they will require is some certification from municipalities saying, okay, Phase 1 is done to the satisfaction of the town. There is a strategic occupancy that's been issued. Therefore, that gives the lender the confidence that they can lend more money for the next phase. If, if, if there isn't a financial institution that feels comfortable with all 10 phases, this might be a situation where the developer might have to cut it back to five phases, for example. So put the half of the projects, put that on pause and see if you can get financing for the first five phases, for example. So I think, you know, from the city's perspective, they're obviously interested in more housing. That's super, super important. But also important is making sure that developers have the financial ability and technical ability to fulfill the obligations of a permit that they've been given. So I think in this case, the ordinance allows for a five-year development period. And if the developer looks at it and says, well, that seems ambitious. Here we are a year from the approval or so, that maybe the best course is to... here we are a year from the approval or so, that maybe the best course is to dial that back a little bit and, and see if you can get the financial backing for a smaller project, and, and then keep the other project in, in, on ice a little bit until the, it gets going and then there's a proven track record.
Yeah.
I, I do know, just as my own observation, is that, that lenders are tightening their belts the last few months. And just across the board, that is something that's happening. So, I'm not surprised that, from an approval last fall to now, that there's a belt tightening.
Yeah, and I think, I think that was originally how we wanted to go about this. And I'm not, I think, I'm not really sure what kind of prompted us to, when I first started discussing this, and I'm not sure if it was Brittany or if it was Matt at the time, but we were talking about, like, what are our options for phasing, because there really isn't anything built into your ordinances that has any kind of phasing. I mean, they got approval for the whole thing as a big lump, so there's really no phasing. And I think he was concerned that that five-year timeframe was not going to be enough, especially five years from the time that it was approved, let alone, you know, now. So, you know, I, I, I'm sure I would, I would be happy, and I'm sure Scott would be happy, if we didn't have to separate this into, into individual lots and just could face it as phases. But that's not how the planning board approved it. So, I'm not sure if that, if there would be a way we could separate it into phases, and that could be officially labeled on a plan as phases, and then we could approach the... So, I don't know how, I don't know how that would work.
It's currently, I mean, when we approved it, it was labeled in phases. I mean, I think, if I remember correctly, you had like maybe a three or four year estimate of completion. Do you have any sense from the bank on, like, how many phases they would finance?
I, I, like I said, I, I wasn't part of those conversations, so I'm not really sure.
Didn't you say that you don't have a commitment yet from any single financial institution?
I, I believe that is correct. I'm not sure, I mean, we provided something from...
Well, the, the original one was from First National Bank.
Yes. And at, over the winter, the discussions they had and when they were looking at it, I think they realized that they were already extended beyond their ability to finance the whole thing. And I'm not sure what the, the remaining, like, what they, what else they would have needed. And I know after that, he approached a bunch of different banks, and pretty, pretty much the general consensus was they, they, they wouldn't be able to do this project as a whole unless he had a fair amount of capital ahead of that to give them work to. I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure what other options there, there is as far as financing.
I have a question about, since the plan was, I wasn't involved in that plan, I'm just going with what was there. But if the planning board approved the site plan with conditions as a whole project, if it's going to be split into phases, whether it be three, four, five, or 10, wouldn't we have to relook at that whole project to make sure that those phases did encompass stormwater, traffic flow, fire department safety, all the things, you know, that there's a laundromat, that there's the public areas, that there's the common areas? Wouldn't we have to look at it in phased portions in order to, I mean...
Are you asking me?
No, I'm asking Tim.
I don't think that's how the ordinance is written.
No, I mean, I think their original timeline was three or four years, if I remember correctly, which would fit within the required timeline for substantial completion. I mean, so...
But if she's only going to get, since, since the original project said they had enough funding to do the whole project, and now if they only have enough funding to do a portion of that, this part, the second portion, may never happen. So, wouldn't we need to look at the portion that was being approved in a nutshell, if that's all, the only funding we have approved for?
That's why we have Tim.
That's, that's my question.
And that's why Tim is in attendance.
Yeah, I think the, the concern is that if the overall project is approved and it's improved in phases, which is typical, and it's in the ordinance that talks about that, that's one thing. But if you split up the lots into 10 lots or, or two lots, it doesn't really matter, then you, the, the planning board should be thinking, "Okay, well, in, in that case, what if one lot gets sold off"? So, what if you have development in one lot, and then it gets, the other lot gets sold, and then there's no development? And then if you've got 10, then you can have a patchwork situation there. And you'd want to try to figure out, how can you protect against that situation where some lots get sold off and not developed, so that people don't get, put it in a situation that they didn't expect? Subdivision rules are there to try to provide some assurance that the buyers of those lots are going to have things like access, road access, they're going to have public utility access and so forth. So, it just opens up another group of concerns if you're going to be dividing it into particular lots.
And, and we did discuss that too, and as, and as, I don't remember when the conversation happened, but the, we did consider the, trying to make the road something that was like a right-of-way, so that that would be its own particular, like, phase. And so, that was done ahead of time. But they don't have, they don't have access other than through a right-of-way. So, I'm not sure how that would work in, in that sense. So, I mean, so you would be creating another right-of-way, couldn't become a public street because it doesn't have access to a public street. So, I don't, I'm not sure how that would work.
And, and you couldn't get the bank to approve, like, you putting in all the infrastructure and then only building like one...
That's an option. We just didn't look at it that way.
If you put in all the infrastructure, that's the part that affects the site overall. Whether or not you build one unit or 100 units, that's, that's, the infrastructure would be there.
Right. And that is an option. And that's kind of how we were going when we had it broken down into three phases, because they were broken down so that those, those phases could be done. And the infrastructure was not, the infrastructure for, for the first phase was not dependent on anything that was happening in the second phase, and then subsequently on the third phase. So, there was no, it wasn't, it wasn't like, in the same way, when I broke these up too, it, it was intended to be a sequential thing, so that by the time, you know, you got done with the first four phases, if the rest of them didn't happen beyond that, it would not impact the development of, to the first four phases. But I don't know how that works, if it's possible.
Capacities and so forth, if Phase One would be high enough that they would take into account Phase Two, Three, Four, Five, whatever, right?
And, and I'm not sure, what were you, were just, what, in, in what respect capacities?
Let's say you have a sewer pipe, right?
Right.
So, if you had, if you size it for, only for Phase One, then that would be a problem. But if you sized it so that it could really accommodate all the other phases as well, even though you're only building Phase One, you know, you're still good to go.
Right. And, and my original comment was that none of the design has changed, so it's designed to handle the full build-out.
And, and, and if it never gets built, full build-out, ever, you know, basically, in Phase One, you have a...
Then it's overdesigned.
Bigger sewer pipe than you needed forever.
That's pretty much the idea.
That's the kind of risk of, I mean, and, and obviously, that's extra cost or whatever.
But it sounds to me like, I think, I mean, what you, what you guys are discussing as far as like the, the legality of this, I think it might be worth some additional research with the bank specifically to be able to provide specific information, so that you guys understand what the banks are asking for.
And can we, and can we get our lawyer involved in that?
I, I would love that.
Conversation, which seems like it would be needed.
Because I think we just need a little bit of guidance in order to know how to, you know, how to approach this.
Especially, I mean, you mentioned that you wasn't sure, I mean, if, if at this point, First National Bank is going to provide any funding. So, I mean, what you just said, I think, I think that's probably what you got to do first, is see, find at least a bank that is going to say, "We're going to commit to one, two, three, four phases".
Yeah, and I think they could, I think they had a commitment for a certain amount of money, but it, because they had a lot of money already lent out to the same types of developments that it wasn't, they were not able to go beyond whatever cap that they had.
I mean, I, I mean, the whole project's been approved. I mean, there is timeframes for substantial completion, as we talked about. But, I mean, I think ideally, that it would be best to keep this as one lot.
I think that would be ideal.
To break it up into 10 lots is, I think, would be hellacious.
It just adds more complexity to it.
Well, there's always the chance it'll be sold off randomly or whatever.
I'm, I'm looking at the way you've got your phases, and as far as Phase One, it's just the housing. You realize Phase One doesn't include the mail building or the dumpsters?
Yes, I did, I did, I, I did that.
Which probably should be included in Phase One, if it's going to be done.
Yeah, I mean, I thought, in, in, if there is, if there is a Phase One, and that one only happens, then a single dumpster and an individual mail for that group would have been enough. So, I think that's, that's why, that was my logic with that. But, I mean, it's in Phase Two, obviously. So, once you get beyond those first few buildings, they most definitely would need it. But, you know, I, if I need to change that into the next phase, into the first phase, it's, I, that's no problem changing that.
But I agree, it should take one long.
I think that's the route that we go.
I guess my suggestion would be is, Shelley, to work with staff, and we'll attempt to come back, whether it's next month. And I mean, we certainly don't want to see this project go away. But it, you know, and it's, I think, you know, getting into legal aspects, we're not good to that.
No, I, I have no experience with any of that, aside from, you know, doing subdivisions and making sure that we have, you know...
Question for, for, for her to consider, what, I'm not familiar with, what is the building in, that's marked Phase Three at the end of the...
It's like a maintenance building. Equipment building.
So, is that something that is needed if she's going to do, was that on the original, like, first phase?
Well, no, I mean, it was, it was a building for them to use for equipment.
But wouldn't they still need that if they're going to do Phase? So, I'm just trying to figure out what she needs to consider to put in that first phase.
So, I think that's mostly, mostly, well, because it was afar, farther away from the, from the first phase, it was like, do we need to build it along the extra road all the way to that building? I mean, a lot of it was for staging, for equipment and for materials.
Yeah, I'm just, just putting it out there for you to think about, when you're doing, you're splitting up, just to make sure whatever you need...
But there, there is no other, I mean, that was also, you know, the best location for that, because it wasn't, yeah, once you build it, it's not going to come down, so it will remain there. And so, having it in the front just didn't make sense. But I, you know, I, I'll take that into consideration.
Well, just if you needed it as a part of the construction, then you want to include that in your financing.
Yeah, right. I mean, unless, unless it doesn't, unless that's something that he doesn't need financing for, he could make it into a staging area, and that doesn't, that doesn't require any real money upfront. I mean, the other question I had, as far as, as far as the, the work that goes into this, if, if he has the ability to do a lot of the groundwork and grading and clearing and stuff ahead of, you know, the, the money that he needs to put up for, for the construction materials, for the, for the rest of the, the project, he doesn't have to approach that in any way as far as the permit goes. Like, is there any reason he can't start doing that over the winter while we figure out the rest of it?
That's what I'd ask. I think that would be, yeah, we'd have that discussion, you know.
Okay. Because I, I think that there would be some value to that, you know, added value to, to the existing, you know, the whole development as a whole, if, if he had it cleared and grubbed and prepped for, you know, some of the utilities. There'd be some, you know, value to that.
Just like Tinker Hill.
How many projects do that ahead of planning boards on other projects? I, yeah, I mean, the, the short answer is yes. We could have that, you know.
Yeah, well, I mean, we've approved this all. I mean, they, if they hadn't come back, they could be out there digging around.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, Tinker Hill was like that. They put all the underground infrastructure up there.
Yeah.
So...
I don't really see why it would be a big problem.
Any thoughts from you, Sarah? And I'll open up some public hearing, if anybody here has any comments or questions.
To confuse us even more.
See you tomorrow, I'll close it. I mean, my suggestion would be to table it, to allow Shelley, Tim, and staff to, to work together to bring us back something that works. Yes.
I have a question.
Certainly.
If we don't just, if we decide not to separate it into lots or for this purpose, what type of approval is, is going to be required, or would it just be like, you know, just permits for building permits? Like, what, do we need to come back to the board if we choose not to?
If we decide not to do the splits, and it's just the same as what was approved, then we can withdraw this application and you can continue and pull your permits.
Okay. And would you be able to provide me with a contact information, so I can have Scott reach out to you guys?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, you're saying we should just have Item Four withdrawn?
If there's, you know, if they decide not to go forward with the splits, and it's the same project, then...
Do you just want to table it?
No, but I mean, for tonight.
Oh, for tonight. Yeah, we can table it until we make that determination.
Okay.
Would we have to come back, if we did separate it, would I have to come back for another preliminary meeting?
We would come, because it's tabled, so technically, we would not make a decision. We would have to come back to another prelim to make that decision, but not, you wouldn't have to resubmit anything.
No, but I mean, it's just two extra meetings, and we already had this one, so...
Yeah. But...
Yeah, there's no decision being made, so we can't, it can't count as a meeting. I mean, it can't, can't count.
Yeah.
Can you make a decision?
Those are choices.
Or they can't, can't they just withdraw it? I'm sorry?
Right, but I'm just saying, can, can you make a decision in, in...
Because it, because this is technically treated, it's a revision, but it's treated as a preliminary. So, this, you know, the decision would be determining completeness. And if you don't find it complete...
But I think what she's asking, and I guess the clarity would be, in my mind, is that if she decides to do it in actual phases and possibly do like maybe this much road, this portions, does she need to come back for a site plan review because it's not consistent with what she got approved for? That's what I'm wondering. I mean, a project would normally be, you know, phased out in, normally, because financially, you'd only build these, and you build these, and you build these. But if she's actually only going to get financing for a portion of it...
For the approved project, there were phases denoted.
Yes, I don't know that.
So, then if it's...
So, as long as she's consistent with that, she don't need anything further.
Exactly.
But I mean, I think the, the key to going, to keep it in 10 phases, not lots, and to go forward for all 10 lots is going to depend a lot on what their financial capability is going to be.
Yeah.
But as far as the application that was presented tonight, so it can be tabled, or we could just make a motion to not approve it. And then that idea of phasing it into 10 lots is...
Table it, I mean, it's going to have to, if it comes back, it's going to have to come back for two, whether we table it or, or vote revision down.
We're going to have to have the financial information.
So, yeah, my suggestion is just a motion to table it.
I second. Did you make a motion?
Yes. All in favor?
Sure, whatever.
Because she could potentially get the...
Thank you, Tim. I guess I'll leave it in, in Brittany, and your hand, and Shelley to find us a way forward. Thank you, Tim.
Let us know how that works out. Yeah, no, I mean, I think you just...
This is the one about the boulders.
Thank you, Shelley.
Somewhere, there's a piece of paper about boulders, right?
Yeah, it's, it's that one right there.
So, let's see, Item Number Five.
No, that's not it.
No, that's not it.
Provision to an approved major-use site development plan entitled Main Street LLC for applicant-owner Dustin Lawrence. The proposal provides a plan previously approved by the planning board to change out the previously approved buffer trees and boulders. The subject property is approximately 3.6 acre parcel located on Route 1A, Bingo Road, Tax PEP 143, Lots One, Two, and Four in the urban zoning district. Someone here representing Main Street LLC. Someone here representing Main Street LLC.
I mean, I think it's pretty basic.
Are you Dustin?
Yeah, I'm Dustin.
Thank you.
The boulder guy.
What's that?
The boulder guy.
Yeah, basically. So originally, we were supposed to put trees as a property barrier basically between me and Judy and her husband, and unfortunately, they had to put a swale there. So from my understanding, nothing would survive there for trees. So I had mentioned a, like a picket fence or something, and that wasn't going to work, so we agreed upon boulders. I didn't actually, at the time, realize I was gonna have to come to planning board to do it. From my understanding, I just had to have agreements between the two of us and we'd be good. So I wrote up a document, we signed it and went forward with it. But I guess you guys don't have like an ordinance for that, so here I am.
Well, basically what you did is violate the conditions of, of approval by doing away with landscaping and putting in boulders, you know, without, you know, having a plan board for revision.
Right, I mean, I talked to Code and said, do I need to do anything or should I? And I was told that I just need to, that it would be fine, I just need to make sure that both of us were okay with it. Fill out a docu, like, create a document, both assign it and that'd be good to go. But that was not the case.
Correct.
So. But, talking, I mean, when RF Jordan started finishing up the groundwork, they, I guess, they were digging in and found a bunch of, like, concrete that had been buried there. And as soon as they dug that up, water was just flowing everywhere, so they wound up having to do a swale. And it diverted the water and right where, and the only option based on the, the property was to do it where the trees would be. So now there's a swale there.
Was there a code thing that, I mean, was, was, was there a reason, something maybe that fit this particular in code that he was, think, thought that's what was?
Well, we had, there was already kind of the start of a barrier there that had three stones there that kind of were on the property line, and we thought that would look good. I guess, I, I spoke to my engineer too, and he didn't think it was gonna be a problem, but I guess he didn't look at the ordinances either. And like I said, I, I had reached out and it seemed like it was gonna be fine, but once I submitted the actual signed document, I was then told that, no, I need to come to planning board. So, I mean, I think it looks good, I just don't, obviously you guys don't have, have an ordinance for it, so I don't know.
I mean, from, from my point of view, it was, it was approved with landscaping as the buffer. I mean, the ordinance allows us to, to grant a waiver for that.
Right.
Personally, I'm, I'm not in favor of boulders versus landscaping.
Right. I mean.
Depending on the, I mean, trees, shrubs, whatever grow in a myriad of, of different climate conditions, soil conditions, I guess I'm a little hesitant to believe that something can't grow there.
That's just what I was told by the, the, by RF Jordan. They're like, I know it's planned to put trees here and shrubs, but there's, they're like, nothing's going to survive based on the water that's gonna come through here. Because every time they dug, it was just, water was pouring out. So, I mean, I'm no expert on it, that's just.
Neither am I, but I mean, I would.
So I don't.
I would rather an opinion from a horticulturist or landscaper.
Yeah, I mean, I spoke, the guy that I'm having do the trees out front, hopefully soon, he has basically said the same thing, that if it's in a swale, then chances are it's not gonna make it. I mean, he, if he wasn't there to see what kind of water was flowing and stuff, but, I mean, I know from my view, because I showed up there when they called me, there was a lot of water at the time. I mean, obviously, right now, there's not because we haven't had much water, but.
But in, in the end though, you know, Kim said basically, well, here's what he said. In short, it would be consistent with the ordinance if the planning board concluded the use of boulders in this context was an appropriate buffer. And you and you basically both agreed that boulders were okay with y'all, right?
Yeah.
So, seems like a done deal to me. Not withstanding your aversion to boulders.
Well, what about if the per, current homeowner no longer owns the home and sells it to somebody else? Now they've got something that's like, of course, they're buying it the way it is.
The boulders are, are okay.
So I take it in this.
It's been in our family for 200 years.
Oh, good. Keep it that way.
What did you say? You said 200 years?
She's had it for 200 years in her family, so that's great. So I'm, I'm in, looking at this picture, so the, the swale you mean is where the, there's a photograph.
Like, right next to the boulders, basically, or where the boulders are.
So there's a little tree there, it looks like an apple tree?
That's on the other side, yeah. So the swale goes on like the, pretty much where the rocks are there. So, I mean, my hope would be that, I mean, based on the swale, it shouldn't affect that tree because it's like a little bit of like, almost a ditch.
So the swale is where the gravel is? I'm just trying to figure out.
It's right basically where the rocks are, I mean, right between the gravel and, and the rocks, I guess. I mean, it's right there.
But notwithstanding swales and water in swales, the question really is, is this acceptable buffer? And legal guy says it is an acceptable buffer, it's within, you know, the purview of whatever, whatever rules, and everybody agrees.
So we're talking landscape buffers, what are we buffering?
Building from other things, I mean.
Are we, are we talking site, are we talking light, are we talking dust? I mean.
We're just talking buffer. Because it's none, because it's not defined, I don't think.
Probably property line?
But if we're going down.
Maybe, that's what we're, that's the buffer is, the property line?
I think basically.
It's a kind of a setback more than a buffer, so.
Yeah, it was like a.
This was a dirt, was it a dirt gravel lot?
I mean, it was, it was dirt, it's like dirt gravel up front, and then the back part where the building actually is now is like grass.
Leave the, leave the picture in front.
Oh, there is now, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I noticed coming by today, though, there's still two curb cuts that are still present beside, well, three.
Yeah, where that, where that long.
Two that were.
I know, I just spoke to my engineer about that too, because I was like, I think that we were supposed to have those fixed.
Closed.
Yeah. So I have to get that, well, I have to get the trees put in still, they were supposed to do that weeks ago and they still haven't, so I just spoke with him yesterday.
But that's, that's, those are code issues at this point.
Yeah, yeah.
Buffers are supposed to support visual screening and creation of privacy.
I'd rather see nothing there than boulders, but that's me.
If you build a new, new structure, then you're supposed to protect natural resources and support visual screening to protect privacy. So that's where I think so.
Well, reality is, if you planted some trees there, it would be some years before they did any of that.
Did you say you had a landscape individual tell you that it wouldn't sustain tree life right there?
Yeah.
Can you get a letter from him stating that to us?
Yeah.
Do you want that letter before you make a decision on?
Well, I agree, but I mean, I mean, he comes after the fact.
You can make a condition of approval.
Yeah.
Because it says we can waive it, it says it can be waived if there's existing trees or something already there that you don't want to tear that down to put in something else or require fence, wall or berm or any combination thereof if there's no adverse impacts upon the neighboring properties. So that's what the ordinance calls for.
Well, do we?
It doesn't say boulders, it says fence, wall, berm or tree.
Do we not have a, do we have a committee that?
Fence, wall, fence, wall or berm or trees.
Yeah, and so in Dustin's defense, he came to us wanting to put up a privacy fence.
Okay.
But a private, like, how big a privacy fence would you need to hide a building that's?
Right.
So we just, and, and then it gets windy and plastic fences.
We haven't got to the public hearing yet, I mean, you're, you're more than happy to come up? But my question, Brittany, I mean, we have a council member that's, has a horticulture background, if I'm not mistaken, and isn't there now a committee or?
We do have the Arbor Commission, yes.
Arbor Commission.
Yes.
So, I mean, if, if somebody's gonna present a recommendation or suggest, you know, I would rather have it come from an independent person than someone the applicant's gonna hire.
Okay, we can have the Arbor Commission take a look if we're legally allowed.
Is that a city commission?
Would we require any other applicant to do that? I don't know.
I mean, is, do we require other applicants to do that? To go to the Arbor Commission to get any sort of recommendation?
Well, no, Mrs. Lawrence is saying that somebody from RF Jordan says nothing will grow there.
And you asked him to get a letter from an arborist or someone, some professional that says, I mean, that's his, that's what you're asking him to do to grant this condition, correct?
I'm not asking for it.
Somebody asked, well, if the planning board asks for that, I'm just saying, like.
And they're allowed to ask for additional information.
Yeah.
I know, we, I know in the past, we have, for condition of approval, we've asked, this was way back when, you weren't even around here. That I have asked for a letter, for a letter from a professional or something on the condition of approval, not necessarily an arborist. It may have been somebody else for fire protection issue or something else that, that they would give us that letter on the condit, and then the approval would be based upon that. As well as a letter from the owner stating that it would be maintained, you know, accordingly. So the whole thing was, you know.
I think all of those things are fair and that if that's the road we want to go down, that's the appropriate way to handle that. I don't know that it's necessary to get a counselor and/or the Arbor Commission involved. The property owner can provide that information and then make a decision based on that information.
From a professional.
Opinion from the counselor, I just knew that she was a horticulturist, botanist or whatever and had some connection to them.
She's a certified arborist.
But this still seems to be a, a thing where the law guy has come and said, you know, you should just go ahead and do this. And I think that should be.
That is also true.
That should be it, whether we like it or not.
I'll open up the public hearing, if you want to check something, and then you can come to the podium.
Okay, so, in, in Dustin's defense, he came to us and wanted to put up a privacy fence. We did not want a privacy fence because we could not have a fence large enough to make it actually privacy and plastic fences always get mildewed and they fall down and they look like, they look horrible. So it's our backyard, so we said, hey, let's talk. And we talked about the fact that when the, when the town allowed the community building to be torn down, they placed boulders along that lot line. And so we just continued the boulders along through the backyard. And I said, that sounds better to me, I'm planning to put in barre gated willows in between the boulders, but you don't know that. And so, like, we're, we're fine with it, but we are not part of the board, so there you go.
Thank you. Or, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm Patrick Ward. My name's Patrick Ward, I own 71 Fieldstone Road. And it's kind of catty corner to the property there. And my concern is with the boulders going in, that it would affect the water runoff. And the reason I'm concerned about that is because this happened, my parents own the property to the east of me. And there was a berm that was pushed up on the property to the north of them, which caused pooling off of their property, but behind them it's stagnant water and it attracts a lot of mosquitoes there. So the concern would be with that, you know, the stones could, would cause a situation similar to that. I just want to know what, you know, that the water runoff is not going to be.
Problems that you talked about creative as a result of this?
Not this one, but it was the same type of thing. They pushed a berm for a property and that channeled the water in behind them and it sits stagnant there. Well, I mean, this year it didn't because of the drought, but it's usually stagnant water and there's breeding ground for mosquitoes.
Because the boulders are in the swale, right?
I mean, Rob, if it impacted his property, his father's property, that would be a code, code issue regardless of.
Yeah.
So if something does arise, this would be the guy that you were talking.
If, if it becomes an issue, we'll, we'll figure it out.
Okay, that's, that was the comment that I, I had to make, just.
Okay, thank you. I'll close the public hearing.
Sure, make the motion to accept a revision of the approved major use site development plan entitled Main Street LLC for applicant owner Dustin Lawrence.
Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second.
All in favor? And I'm opposed.
I'm not opposed, if I'm voting today.
You are.
Well, actually.
Can we recount that, please? All in favor?
Well, we got Matt's.
Matt is the first alternative.
Yeah.
Mark, you're still alternative, so your vote doesn't count, sorry.
So Matt's vote counts.
So three, two.
Wow, a split decision.
Can you vote? Can you please vote?
We need to vote.
All, all in favor?
I'm gonna go for it.
All in favor, okay.
That was a good effort.
All opposed? Okay.
Thank you. It was usually not an issue, but.
Wow.
That's why I asked for the recount there.
Who knew that we would do a three, two vote over rocks?
You said it was gonna be exciting.
We allow.
It's common sense, people, people got together and did the right thing, but I.
Can we have a five minute? Should we do it official, five minute?
We're taking a five minute reset.
Five minute reset. Five minute rate.
Five minutes, great.
I figured.
Can I put my memo before we start?
The memo was helpful to find what we're looking at.
Help us focus on the purview. Please.
Well, you can reiterate it, it's from you. We're back in session, item number six, cannabis ordinance review. I mean, did you distribute this to everybody?
Just to summarize, yes, everyone has a copy, and just to like summarize the main point.
It's from you.
It is. Basically, that the focus of this ordinance review is to be on the pertinent zoning piece. Did I say that correctly? So, we're focused on the zoning aspects of this ordinance for this discussion tonight.
But we're recommending or not the entire ordinance, right?
Just the piece that pertains to the zoning.
So, we're gonna say we're approving or disapproving paragraphs seven, eight, and 10, but not five and four?
Basically, you're not, you're not even really giving a recommendation, you just have to give a report to the council on what you think of it. It doesn't have to be an up or down, yes or no.
Oh, okay.
You, you, the, the board just has to prepare a report for the council.
The board has to do that?
Some, whoever.
And, and specific to the zoning overlay, specific to that, you have additional comments about the ordinance itself, you can provide that, but what we're looking for is specific to the zoning overlay. Please.
Anything that involves zoning?
Correct.
So, you have two maps?
Or where it says planning board.
For this discussion?
Or the, you know, planning board has this responsibility.
Sure.
Or alternatively, it should, but doesn't say that. Because the planning board gets kicked in about page three or something, and there's a pure, apparently, planning board thinks they come earlier than that, but they're not called out as being within the planning board purview.
That can be in your report.
Well, sure.
Yes, you can comment on that.
So, anything in this ordinance that says shall be located, that's a zoning thing, is that not correct?
Pretty much.
Okay, that's what I needed to know.
Okay.
Go for it.
So, tell me the difference, hold on a second, tell me the difference between the current zone for overlay combo versus a proposed cannabis overlay zone.
Seen an area in the north that's new, and then an area in the southeast that's...
Why do we have two maps?
There's two different ways to show, and it shows it in, it shows a little better in color, because we did it in black and white. The second map shows a dark line around the, what would be the proposed cannabis overlay zone. It is the entire, the darker area is the entire current commercial district, in that the dark line extends across Card Brook to the north. It basically encompasses what would be known as the Shaw's Plaza, and then across the street were Key Bank, Merrill Furniture, those properties. And so, that's, I, I made that determination by just, by creating the overlay, that that area of High Street was materially indifferent to the actual commercial zone. So, if we wanted to have a cannabis shop in that plaza or in that area, it makes no, no material difference. No one would be able to tell you that you weren't in the commercial zone if you were in the Shaw's Plaza, as opposed to the Main Coast Mall or anywhere else.
Okay, so when I'm looking at this, these maps, it's, it's this line that goes around like that.
The green area is your cannabis overlay zone. The second map shows it with a dark line around it.
Okay, so my, my, my question really is...
Oh, that's the city, that's the city limits.
Well, my question is, this one seems to show, here's the green, and here's this little area here that's not green.
Correct.
And over here, I have the cannabis area in red, but...
Oh, you are correct.
There's an inconsistency between those two things.
I'll have to, yeah, you are correct, I'll have to fix that.
Okay, I pointed it out.
I've never caught that, in all, I guess, you look at this too many times and you just don't, seriously, you're not seeing things.
I totally agree, and I've looked at it too many times now.
I, yeah, you and I both.
So, that is, it is supposed to be part of it?
I will have to figure out which one of those is correct.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not positive on top of that, but thank you for catching that, I will, I will find out and fix that.
So, that scores one for me, and that was a plan.
Oh, it's in a minute, so don't worry, Rick.
You, you want to call it there, it's one, one, nothing to you?
Yeah, exactly. It's late, you know?
Yeah, but you're still in negative numbers.
I wasn't keeping the score until this point.
Good job. So, I have a comment and a concern. Looking at page three, when we're talking about locations, why was item five struck from the ordinance?
Under Article Four.
Under Article Four.
Oh. Number five was struck?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it says, starting with adult use cannabis establishments?
Yeah, adult, adult use cannabis establishment shall not be located within 300 feet of a school, dormitory, church, chapel, or parish house. The distance must be measured from the main entrance to the premise, to the main entrance to the school, dormitory, church, chapel, or parish house by the ordinary course of travel. That was, here it struck right out.
Doesn't, but doesn't number six supersede that?
No.
No?
Because Main State Title 30A, MSRA, Section 3253, does not say anything about churches, chapels, or parish houses.
I did not know that.
It only mentions schools.
Yes, that was, I think that's an earlier version of the ordinance that...
So, here's my concern, and I, and I will tell you why. Because in our ordinance, in Section 817.6 of our ordinance, okay, item A4, we have a requirement. Now, it's for medical marijuana dispensaries, okay? Now, I know this is not a dispensary, but a dispensary is more highly secure than just a regular store.
Right.
Okay? So, in that item, in 817, it specifically says places of worship. I would like to see that back in the ordinance as far as the distance from places of worship, churches, parish houses, et cetera, et cetera, period.
Isn't there wording in the state statute governing?
What's that?
Isn't there wording in the state statute governing how far it can, has to be away from?
Not, not from places of worship, it's only for schools. The reason that I, that I determined, trying to synthesize, and everybody wanted, putting the planning board and the city council, the reason that I determined, that should have come out, I don't know why that's in that version, I'm not sure where it is. I don't think it's in my version, I have it, so I'm not sure what, what happened there, I might apologize. But that came out because the easiest way to, to make everybody happy and what they wanted was to make that overlay zone, the, the, the...
True, and I get that.
Yeah.
But we can still put wording in here that says that you can't have it within a certain distance to churches, parishes, or...
The problem with that was that they were putting a, there's...
And I'm talking about existing.
I understand that, but there's discussion of a new church going in to the mall.
Yeah.
The Main Coast Mall. So, that would take out all of that area.
No, no, this is specifically for existing. If, if there is no church existing in the mall, and they decide to move in afterwards...
They just sign, I'm pretty sure they're in talks of signing right now, though.
Yeah, but I mean, the point, the point is, that happens right now. I mean, if you have a bar, and I believe this issues in alcohol, because I think that's in our ordinance as well, if you have a bar that's within certain feet of an existing church...
We, we have the option to deny it.
Correct.
It's not a shallow, it's a main.
But if the bar is there, and a church decides to come into the place within 300 feet of the bar, that's on them, it's not on, you don't...
But we're, we're worried about the reverse, that's the reason I went with the overlay zone and the commercial zone, taking over the commercial zone and up to the Shaw's Plaza, and not having any restrictions on being, on setbacks from places of worship, was because, we're worried about the reverse, where church goes in first in the commercial zone, in, in the Main Coast Mall, and then it becomes setbacks from that entire property line. If it's, if you use the, if you use the property line, setbacks are almost into the Shaw's Plaza with a setback. So, it, it really, it really limits where we could have one if, if by the time we get this passed, there's a church, for instance, hypothetically, in that mall, which...
I, I, and I understand, I understand your grief, but I don't, I, I'll, I'll say it right up front, I don't care. I think it needs to be in the ordinance.
Can we put it in the ordinance with, you know, what you suggested with existing, but then date it to anything after, like, when the referendum was passed? Would that be?
And it doesn't need to be, I don't believe it's the thousand feet for alcohol and bars, I think it's 300 feet.
300 in the ordinance.
I think it's 300.
We wanted, I don't...
We wanted to match them, right?
I think we were trying to match it up to, so everything was uniform, so you wouldn't have 300 feet for, for, for places of worship for...
Yep, that's fine.
But then 500 feet for schools, and then a thousand feet for the, for the drug free zones. So, I was trying, we were trying to, at that point of the, and trying to make it all the same.
I believe 30A says that the municipality can set the distance, but no less than 500.
Correct. But you, but the caveat there is that drug free zones were a thousand, and those are not negotiable, and we have four of them in town. So...
Anyway, that's my point.
Are you done with him?
Well, let me follow up the mics, I mean, off the top of my head, I think. I mean, how many churches, you've got St. Joe's, you've got Pine Street Baptist Church, you've got three up by...
Washington Street, there's Seventh Day Adventist Church.
You're talking about half a dozen?
Yeah.
Half a dozen churches, you're gonna say that these could be right next door? Is that, is that what the, I mean, the council kind of, I think, indicated that they didn't want recreational marijuana business to be right next to a church.
So, I mean, that's, the best way I could make it, make everything work with, they also wanted it to be on the High Street corridor, and if you start putting those, if you start putting down those setbacks extremely, then you can't really have a, there, there's enough real estate left once you start putting the setbacks.
I realize that, 'cause I mean, originally, the proposed cannabis overlays, the allowed area was quite a bit bigger than this green map. I mean, we were talking about Main Street, you know, pretty much all High Street, I'm not even, I'm not sure if we talked about going up State Street, I can't remember. But...
It, the, the reason we limited it to the, to that area, the commercial, basically the commercial district, is because it's, there, there, we don't, we don't have the schools, we have, was one school in the area, right on the edge. And everything else that, other places like downtown has, has those, has those restrictions because there, there are daycare schools, and same thing with State Street, that, there's no, until you get out into, you know, beyond...
And I think...
The Udon River, there's really no place to put one of these places on State Street.
If somebody wants to open up a daycare in that, in that plaza, they can't do it because they'll be within a thousand feet, because 30A says pre-kindergarten. So, I mean, it's either a church or a pre, if somebody wants to open up something within that zone, what do you do?
I think it all depends on who comes first.
Basically, and that, and that's...
That's basic, I understand that.
The overlay zone not including churches, that, so that means that these places can't be anywhere else in the city, so that therefore, places of worship are, are free of that burden of being too close to one of these locations.
You've got a church in the green zone now.
We have a few, yeah.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, they're, they're operating in the commercial zone. And it, and kind of the, the feeling that I got from talking to other staff members is that like, you, you're operating in the commercial zone, you kind of know that's the, comes with the territory of being in the, in the commercial zone.
Yeah, we're just adjacent, my church, so we're right adjacent to residential, so, I didn't realize we were commercial, so...
But I guess if you take, just to make things a little complicated, if you take that tack, how long was this commercial zone commercial? When was it established? You know, this church has been here for decades.
Correct.
They were here before the commercial zone.
What was the land use plan say? What does the map say? What is it projected to be, what was it in the past? Was it always commercial since zoning was adopted, or?
Well, they went through a really big rezoning a long time ago.
I had to dig up that map.
Yeah, no, that, well, the High, High Street corridor's been the commercial zone for as long as I've been alive. I mean, that, that mall...
This is off the beachland, so...
Yes, and I, I had a, I had a pretty good idea.
Yeah.
There's only two places your church could really be over there. Personally, I'm sympathetic, but I'm trying to make this work for everybody. Go ahead.
Can I move along?
You can do whatever you like.
No, I can't, actually.
Well...
But I, I do want to say that, like you were saying, that you want to try to do, you want to try to make it so that the facility can come into the mall and make this work. And we shouldn't be looking at a project, trying to make it compliant for a project. It should just be, it, it either meets the criteria that we want as a municipal, as a city, or we, or it doesn't. It shouldn't be bent to make something fit. That's, that's, that could be not the greatest way to...
I was, I was just trying to...
See, you also have a school.
Give an area for this to work.
Right, I mean, I get that part of it, and I remember talking at the council workshop, and it was like, some people wanted the churches, some people didn't, some people wanted schools, some people didn't, and then you said, if we do that, then nothing fits anywhere, and that is a problem. But we can't do it specifically to meet, to, to make it easier for something we think is coming, and we can't do that.
And Maris Academy's in your zone.
Well, I think they're, they're, they either, I think they're actually technically in urban zone, but yes, they're right there on the border.
Yeah.
Or either way.
Okay.
Well, they're not, they're not in the overlay zone, I don't believe. I think Maris Academy's in the...
I think they, yeah, they're, they're in, they're in the area of...
It's a big lot, right there.
But it's... But they would be within a thousand feet if you put something there.
Correct, that was here.
No, is it? Is this three, here? Oh, right, okay, sorry.
Maris Academy is right across from Martin, so it's right here.
They're in the white, they're in the white zone.
They're in the white.
But if somebody moved into the green zone, they could be well, they could be real close to a thousand feet, pretty close, so...
Article six, section two, which is responsibilities and review authority. Okay, planning board is not mentioned in there? It seems to me that, for the sake of clarity, that it should be in there.
So, well, I'd say for, not to cut, I didn't mean to cut you off, but it's, it would be handled under, under the normal rules for, for plan review, so if, if it tripped, if it tripped a planning board review, we would obviously send it to planning board, if it, if...
Right, but why don't you, my point is, you know, you've mentioned, sometimes you've mentioned planning board, sometimes you don't. Sometimes you mention code enforcement, sometimes you don't. Okay, so there needs to be consistency with how these things are addressed. And this imply, I mean, when I read this section, responsibilities and review authority, okay, here's who has responsibilities and authority, planning board is not mentioned. And it seems to me that it should be mentioned if they're gonna have a role.
But, that was brought up last week. But, that was brought up last meeting, is further on, if the license expires or gets suspended or revoked, and the way I read it, if somebody subsequent wants to go into the application, it has to come to planner board.
Exactly, exactly, so that's where, that's where the inconsistency is.
But there's no performance standards in up in chapter fifty-six, for this type of business, like we did for solar farm. We develop performance standards for solar farm.
And I, and tho, those, those will be coming before the end of the year.
So if you're an applicant and you read this ordinance, like Rick said, you would, you would presume that the city clerk has the authority to pretty much review and move forward with the application and put it in the lottery system. There is nothing that would tell the applicant that they potentially have a lot bigger hurdle to jump through. So even if it just said, has to do this and comply with all local ordinances as far as site plan review, per, you know, major, minor, whatever, just so that it, they, they don't think, this is all I gotta do, no matter what, to avoid us from getting in a tangle. So I agree, it should be clarified.
Further, in article, what appears to be eight, uh, section two, paragraph six, there's a bunch of stuff about land use approvals and stuff like that, right? Site plan approval, change of use permit, whatever, whatever. Anyway, it seems to me again that the planning board should be called out in terms of that's what they, now, I understand that you're saying is, well, gee, those words are there, and that means that the planning board would have responsibilities, so to. But it's, to be, to be clear, to be consistent, again, I think the planning board should be called out in terms of having some responsibility there, because later on, it is called out, like John just said, right? Yeah, and art, that's article nine, section, paragraph three, that's the one that John was looking at. Under cost component analysis, I'm not even sure what that actually means, but that's okay. But things like you have site, I mean, well, there are other pieces that are not mentioned in the list. The list doesn't say, for example, or anything like that, it says, here's the list, okay? So there's nothing about parking lots, for example, and it turns out that there are studies that have shown that, you know, cannabis places need lots, lots more parking than other places do. So, so the, the point is that there are things that seem to be missing out of the cost component analysis that would be under the purview of the planning board.
Yeah, well, this, this is supposed to be the licensing component as well, of, of, that's not, not necessarily all of it.
That's under application.
No, I know, I understand, but the, the whole, the whole ordinance is a, is called a licensing ordinance, so it doesn't, it doesn't have everything that it should have for, like, for fifty-six for land use. And that's, that part of it, that component is coming before the end of the year, before we actually start taking applications.
So it just needs to say that they have to comply with chapter fifty-six in its entirety?
Right, so, exactly, so there needs to be some clear statement that this overlays that, that other ordinance, and that they, you know, satisfying this one doesn't satisfy the other one, and, and so forth.
Okay.
Along those lines, it would seem that, you know, the tables of land, permitted land uses in different zones and so forth, that you might want to be listing cannabis whatever in that list, or you already know that, 'cause you're shaking your head.
Boy, I've, I've already added to my own personal version of it, of the ordinance.
I could hardly wait to see yet another version of this ordinance.
No, no, not this one, it'll actually be fifty-six.
Oh, I see.
I've already.
Yeah, yeah, well, no, no, this engenders, changes in fifty-six.
Yeah, exactly, and I've already started making those, it's just not, it's not ready for this, and it's not what this is about. It's just to get the licensing ordinance ready for the council to say yea or nay to.
Okay, but it's, you'll have to be consistent and.
Correct, well, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll make sure before the council says yea or nay, that, that stuff gets tightened up.
And this, you start saying merit-based criteria assessment, which is a wonderful buzz phrase, but it doesn't really tell you much detail about.
No, I, I don't, yeah, I'm, I don't know, that part got taken out.
Licensed, article nine, section three, but those are only, we only worry about them for license renewals, not for the initial license, which doesn't make a lot of sense either.
You're, no, it's, that's, actually, you're right, that is in there.
What a surprise.
Yeah, no, you must, I don't, that's, I, well, we, we, we did, we had talked about merit-based stuff before, and I don't know.
Oh, no, no, we did, and, and that, that came on, but, but the point is that you've never defined that, and you've never come up with, how do you measure things, which, I don't know whether they need to be in the ordinance or not. If you, if you're gonna talk about them, I would suspect that they need to be in the ordinance.
And unfortunately, I'm still waiting to get my version of this back from the lawyer with your, with your recommendations from last time.
Okay.
Well, you're in that same paragraph, and it's actually article nine, three, but also ten, three. You said, must comply with the then current requirements of this ordinance and the code. What is the code?
The code is, that, that's, the ordinance is, oh, it's, if they're.
It's not defined anyplace, I.
I say, I'll be hon, I didn't, I didn't put that line in there, but that, that was, that was.
Well, it's, it's, it's a nice word, and it's a good word, it's an appropriate word, but it needs to be more defined.
No, it is.
Am I, am I staying within the purview of the planning board here pretty well? Good, 'cause I wouldn't want to offend you. In the very, very beginning, and, and, and I'm just asking this question, uh, you know, the very title is adult, adult-use cannabis establishment licensing, blah, blah, blah. In the first sentence, it says, only cannabis establishment licensing ordinance. Should that first sentence read adult-use cannabis licensing? The term cat, adult use is missing in the first sentence, but it's in the title.
Yeah, we can add that.
Again, consistency.
No, you're, that's correct.
Yeah, I will also say, if you have any additional kind of like grammatical or consistency language things,
All we turned in.
email to us would be really helpful.
All we turned in.
Yeah, okay, fantastic. Fantastic. These aren't up for discussion, they're more like suggestions for refining language, and so I just kinda wanna make sure the discussion is kept tight.
But the thing is, like, putting the planning board in there is, is more than just.
Yes, heard.
Yeah, do you need more references to the land use ordinance in here? I mean, you know, so that one refers to the other, or is this good enough the way it is? I, I, you know, I was really, I don't know.
Yeah, that's, that would be, that would be a question for, for the lawyer, and that's, that's what he's supposed to be working on right now for me. Unfortunately.
Okay, and so, and you're working on revisions to the existing land use ordinance that are consistent with, that make this consistent, okay?
I'm gonna get a rough draft of that done, and then submit it to the lawyer, and hopefully have it back sometime.
Okay, whenever you talk about performance standards, you need to be really clear how those things are measured. You know, I mean, for example, you say something about noise somewhere, or odor, or whatever, well, we have existing ordinances about that. Those should probably be referenced. I'm done. Can I go home now?
Not until the gavel falls.
Damn.
I turned in all my comments before.
I appreciate them.
That's, and pretty much, Rick hit all the open areas. We appreciate it.
This was all submitted to be fixed, and I just haven't received that version back.
Good.
Anything, Mike?
No, I've said my piece.
All good.
I would like to have some boulders around this. Around the cannabis establishment.
That's what you want the buffer for.
Yeah.
You want a tree buffer to block the view of cannabis.
Raymond?
Is there a time limit on the public hearing comments? Just making it clear, in the public hearing opens, if there's a time limit to comments.
And it should be stuff that hasn't already been addressed before.
Please.
Yes.
So keep it short, Ray.
Keep it, they have five minutes.
I'm objecting, that, for, this public hearing on this, I should not be held to three minutes. And if that, if you're gonna hold me to three minutes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna be very happy. Because there are two things, the first thing I wanna say, listening to the questions from the members of the planning board and their comments tonight, it raises to the, the first issue that I have to raise, is that it seems that there are several drafts of this thing floating around, none of which are really ready to be considered by you tonight. And, and that comes from the questions and the things that are in these. I have here what I believe is the last draft that has been available. It's one that I picked up at City Hall on September ninth. And it has basically this new chapter, it has the, uh, appendix A for the overlay for the zoning map, and then it has, oh, it has appendix B on the lottery, and then it has three or four pages for chat, section four hundred of, oh, golly, the licensing.
Raymond, the, the latest one should have, say, draft revision nine, ten, twenty-five in the upper right corner, that's the latest revision. If you got that on nine, nine, you may not have the.
Well, I, I think, I think, I think it is, I think it, I think it probably is, from some of the things that have been questioned.
I mean, does it say nine, ten, twenty-five in the upper right corner?
I don't know, I don't have that in the up, no, I didn't get, I don't know where that came from. I picked this up from,
That's.
From Robert on nine, nine.
That's, that's.
Okay, cool.
So that's, that's the problem, right there. The first problem I'm gonna mention. The notice for your meeting first was posted out here on the bulletin board for this meeting on, uh, heavens. On, on, I believe, the eighteenth, it appeared in the Ellsworth American on the eighteenth, so it meet the notice requirement for that. And the next one appeared a week ago. The notice, first thing about it is, this notice requirement, it doesn't really say very much. Cannabis ordinance review, public hearing, discussion and council recommendation. And there's nothing other information about what's in the ordinance that's gonna be considered. In fact, basically, the ordinance that is talked about being considered wasn't even available on the eighteenth, when this notice was published and put out. And a week later, when it was, in fact, this ordinance, I have been, this, the only ordinance available would have been the nine, nine one. But that's not the ordinance that you should be considering tonight, because there's been, I've been trying and checking for the past ten days, or week, see whether the new ordinance, latest thing, which, which, uh, Robert has talked about, but he hasn't been able to get, was gonna be available, because I knew that is really what she should be before you people tonight.
It is, Raymond, we have the revision nine, ten, twenty-five, that is the revision we are talking about.
Well, that is a revision that is not going to be going before the council, or anything remotely resembling this. I suspect it's going to be, go, council on the twentieth of this next month. So I think that you should have this revision that has been talked about, that's coming tonight, rather than this one, because this isn't what is gonna see the light of day three weeks from, uh, or twenty days from now. Okay, I'm gonna go on to the next thing. And, uh, I think some very good points have been made, and I think that, based on the consideration of those, and this point that I raised about notice, I don't think this is proper notice. It's, isn't enough information about what's being discussed, so the public knows. I know, because I'm interested, but I don't think anyone else really has any idea what's going on. Now, we've listened to Robert tonight talking about, and I'm glad to hear this, but I think that revisions to section, chapter fifty-six of the ordinances should be ready to go at the same time this is, because this has a lot of things that has, is gonna have an effect on section fifty-six. Now, I just wanted to call your attention to what I have on this thing, which I think is the same thing you had, is article four, and this is really interesting. This is the only reference, other than appendix A, to the cannabis overlay zone in this whole proposed ordinance. And it says adult use, and it's under, in the, in the, in this paragraph three of a section called prohibited activities. And this says, adult-use cannabis establishments shall only be located in accordance with the city's zoning ordinance. Okay, now, this makes reference to the zoning ordinance, including the cannabis overlay zone, see appendix A, which is all, just consists of two maps, and, uh, I'll show you what I have for the two maps, and I don't know if this remotely, 'cause these, since they came up a copying machine, they're not, they're not exactly have any color, coloration on them, and I'm not sure, from looking at ones that were held up, whether this is what really is what you're considering or not.
It is, same, it is.
Well, same, okay, all right. Now, let's get back here. And shall not be located within, this talks about the five hundred feet of, of, of schools, and, and that. And, uh, but my point on this is, this is operating as an amendment of chapter fifty-six, is, that's my view, and, and that's what I see someone nodding his head, that I have that right. As an, as an amendment of chapter fifty-six, which then means, which I think should also require, if they're gonna have this map, you've also got to, and I think you could have it at this time, as a separate amendment of fifty-six, setting forth the various things that are allowed in the overlay zone, and you go into chapter fifty-six, and I don't know which section it is, three or four, where you have the charts, it shows what's allowed. You should have all of this material now, to be considered by the council as part of this. And I don't think that's been in the works at all.
We would have, we have an.
Are you gonna have it for the meeting on the twentieth?
No, because this is only for licensing, the, the only, this is referencing the overlay zone that will be ready before we take licenses.
I, I think, I think you need to have the overlay zone and the zoning changes that pertain to this ordinance, ready to go now.
Our purview. If the council wants to proceed the way it is, then it's up to the council. I mean, it's not our responsibility to, to make rules and regulations for them.
Well, you're not making rules and regulations for them, this is, this is, you, you have, you have to make, under the amendments to chapter fifty-six, the city zoning ordinance, land use ordinance, you have to make your report. And in the past, I think it's usually been recommendations of yes or no on the changes, and I think that that is, you have that authority and should say what is going on as far as your position on this amendment to fifty-six. And, I don't know, that's as far as I'm gonna say it, because I agree, you, you go through these, this, and there is all kinds of stuff that makes, it isn't consistent. Basically, I'll just point out one other thing, which, which I, I don't think is your purview at all. But the licensing authority, the licensing authority definition has some amorphous language, making it sound like that the licensing authority is the city clerk and/or maybe the city council. Uh, and then you go in here, and you go to licensing authority, I think it should be made clear in this provision, which I don't think you can do, although you, you are authorized to make a report, and if you wanna make a report, you, I think it should be your power to say that you would recommend that the licensing authority be the city council and not the city clerk. The city clerk can be their agent to do the, to do the job of getting the applications in, collecting it, making sure it's an order, and, and holding the, and holding the, uh, lottery, and running the mechanics of the lottery, although that could just as well be done by the code enforcement office.
That's outside of our pur, that's not what we're supposed to discuss. We're only supposed to discuss the aspects that affect zoning and the planning board. Rest of it, that part is not for us to determine.
But I'm, but I'm talking zoning, fifty-six, the overlay and whatever's allowed in the zone is zoning. in the zone is zoning and is necessary for, I would submit, for this ordinance to be valid, if it is adopted, or if some variation of it's adopted. I don't think this is gonna be adopted. I have no idea what.
That person won't be adopted.
I have no idea what's, they are going to be coming, but I don't think what you initially get is going to be adopted, adopted first.
Let's have any of the specific items. I think we're done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's somebody online, I think, that might have commented, Edel, or.
It is ZB?
You might not have.
Could he? I, I, here before your last meeting, represent Charlie, which is a medical tour in town. Just wanted to be monitoring the meeting, to see what was discussed. I appreciate Ford's comments and discussion tonight. Trying to get with city staff to discuss our proposed revision to the ordinance, which does not indicate zoning issues. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing. What actually are we voting on?
What is the recommendation?
It's just a recommendation.
You can now give a recommendation to the council.
If you have one.
If you want to. If this is, based on, you can say yea or nay, the zoning components of this are appropriate or not appropriate, or.
All the things we talked about tonight are things that need to be considered, addressed, and modified, or changed.
That sums it right up.
Yep.
Your recommendation is to.
Recommendation, I think in general, is that, from, from, relative to the planning board, seems to me it's not ready for prime time, and for all the reasons that we mentioned. I mean, that's my view, sorry.
Do we need a vote?
No.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Can we say, make a motion to adjourn?
I'll agree with that.
Wait, 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 Freddie.
Comments?
Staff comments. Thank you all for your patience tonight. I sent out an email about annual trainings. I just wanted to get touch base for two minutes. Thoughts on annual trainings? I know they were a thing in the past, I don't know if there was a specific.
Well, we used to go down to, I mean, the Maine Municipal Association did the training at an X location, a Y location, and people got sent. That's.
That was the whole.
That was the way we did it for the last six years.
'Cause I'd like to, like, do that, but as a group, but then make this an annual thing, whether it's the training every year, or we have our own training just to review the ordinance, answer questions as a group.
I think it's a good idea.
And make it a separate workshop, so an additional meeting. And I wanna make it like a standing every year in February, or whatever month we choose.
Winter.
So.
Yes.
Snow date.
Yes.
Let's do it.
Yes.
So, do you all have a preference for a month, and do, do you wanna keep it on a Wednesday night? Is the question I have. If you don't have answers tonight, that's fine, we can do another email, but just.
February, March.
I think you were talking about, I mean, you still talk about getting the video from MMA, so I, I think you said that's like a three-hour.
The training session is four hours, but they have meal breaks, so it could be anywhere between a two, three-hour video, probably closer to three.
And I think the idea is to perhaps have ten Ps there.
Potentially.
Yeah.
At least for a little bit, if there's questions.
Absolutely.
So.
So, so we'll look at it like a three-hour meeting.
You mean like tonight?
Like tonight, yeah.
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 Yeah, that's a good idea.
So, closer to four.
Let's do it.
We'll make sure that there's snacks.
How come there were no snacks tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah, seriously.
This is not training.
Someone's angry over there.
You're not allowed to eat during the planning board meeting.
Sorry.
Really?
What?
That's a rule.
We're taking a lot of breaks.
Apparently. But during training, that's different. So we can have snacks at training.
I would, I would say, have the training after the first of the year.
Okay. Do you think January or February? Okay.
I vote February.
Start early than five-thirty. I know some people work, some people don't.
Well, that's to be decided. I mean, if you can do it earlier than that, I would prefer to have it.
As though when the government opens back up.
Some people actually work for a living.
Well, maybe not after today.
But I'll, yeah, that's right. Can we, can we get it before the, before you ask them back to work?
Yes, we can try.
You got a crystal ball? Do it next week. Fully free next week.
I'm sure the natural part.
I will float out some dates and times.
Engagement is an important part of your job.
February, and that's, that's it.
That's it, say what?
February, that's fine.
Other than ordinance update.
She'll, she'll float dates and times.
Excellent.
Later time, yeah.
If it's on the calendar, I can plan around it, as far out, so just throw something on the calendar.
Perfect. Yeah, thank you.
Anything else?
Do you want an update on the ordinance rewrite process?
Of this?
I can do a really, no, 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 chapter fifty-six, I'll do a really quick overview. We're working with Musson Group, they're our consultant to help us go through things. There are two phases. The first phase is going through December, and right now, they're focusing on making sure that fifty-six is brought to the standards that the state dictates. So we're working on that, and any really high priority things, things that are on fire, that we need to address more immediately. There's a second phase that starts January and runs through June, where we'll really be digging into adjusting a lot of things. We need your feedback on this, and, and suggestions for changes in fifty-six, and so we're looking to have those before the second phase begins. So we'll be following up with emails, asking for your feedback on revisions for fifty-six sometime in December.
You know, what might be useful is if, when you officially, I mean, you're officially asking now, I get that. But, you know, if you had some probes that we should be responding to, I mean, if there's things in there that you think, wow, you know, we really need to be talking about this. Well, we may well know that, but it would be better if you said, you know, think about this, think about that, so there's like a half a dozen of those or whatever, so.
Yeah.
You know, so that our AI can be put to work officially.
Yeah, and we, we do have some of that stuff, we've worked with the Musson Group for those. They're, they're deeper dive things that, in broad stroke, that they have looked at, and they've addressed, or they've identified, rather.
Yeah, I'm not sure that those are the best guys, I'm kidding. I know who you're talking to, so.
Well, it's, it's more than just one, there's team, team working on it, so.
Yeah, no, that's good.
Okay. That's it, about that one.
Yep, we can go home now.
Well, these are already made the motion.
I made a motion.
Second.
Holy shit.
Thank you.